In accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40A, Section 11, notice is hereby given that the planning board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, July 12, 2017, at 7:30 PM in the Board of Selectmen Room in the Town Hall, 663 Main Street, Bolton, Mass. to hear and act upon the application of Walker Development, 33 Lyman Street, Suite 300, Westboro, Mass. The application is for the preliminary farmland and open space plan residential development, phosphorid plan, for property identified on Bolton's assessor's map, 3D, as parcel 9 and 9A, located on Hudson Road in Bolton's residential zoning district. The proposed development consists of an 18-lot subdivision. Good evening, how are you?
Good.
Can you come up here or maybe Brandon, if you want to do your presentation, however you guys want to go.
Sure. I'll stand back here or just...
Yeah.
Brandon Ducharme, Ducharme and Dillis, here tonight with Jeff Walker, Walker Development, J.J. Cohen. And as you said, we filed a preliminary subdivision for a couple of reasons. Number one, obviously, we're looking at a residential subdivision. We filed it preliminary in order to get some feedback from the board, discuss the potential waivers. Also, because the subdivision is in excess of 15 acres and results in the creation of six more lots, it's subject to the major residential bylaw in town. Where we actually present two plans, we're going to present a traditional plan as well as an open space plan. Ultimately, the board weighs in, decides which plan we move forward with. The traditional plan also coincides with the phosphorid plan to establish the ultimate lot count for the phosphorid design. So, real quick, just to kind of give an overview of the property, this is Hudson Road, this is Danforth Lane here. As you head back this way, you're heading towards 117. There's an existing farmhouse or house here. There's two parcels that comprise the property here, there's about a 30-acre piece and a 20-acre piece, which totals in about 55 acres of land. It is a preliminary plan, but at this point, we actually do, we have flown the topos, we've got some pretty good topography of the area. We've delineated the wetland resource areas, we've got a bordering vegetated wetland here. There's another wetland that kind of carries through this low area up in here, we have a couple isolated wetlands, and then it's just kind of a high point and a saddle, and then there's a wetland that kind of continues all the way up into the back piece of the property there. So, this first plan is our traditional layout plan. We're using conventional zoning, and we've done this with a through road, and we're kind of coming in between these two wetland areas, you know, wrapping through the middle of the property, coming back out and exiting back onto Hudson Road. This is a mix of just regular conventional lots, as well as, I believe, at least two backland lots. Looking at this, we've gone through and we've done soil testing to the property to kind of establish septic areas, we've laid out well locations here, and this establishes a lot count of 18 lots on the 55 acres.
How big are those backland lots, Rob?
Uh, this one, it's about 206,000 square feet.
Okay.
This one here is about...
200?
200.
Okay, cool.
That's right, 200, so...
Yeah.
And there's two blind driveways behind that layout.
Yeah, again, just looking at this layout, you can figure the houses where they are. You'd have a couple common driveways with a mix of shared driveways here. But as you can see, obviously, with the larger lot requirements and the backland lots, you're really spreading the entire development over the land. The other plan here is the open space plan. And this was laid out kind of in harmony of other open space developments we've done in town, Northwoods, just to give one example, where we have a single road, it's a longer cul-de-sac that kind of comes into the property. The idea is to kind of get most, it's a cluster subdivision with open space, so really to get the bulk of the development kind of in the middle of the land here. This is the existing house just shown here, where, you know, much of the housing is kind of set back off of Hudson Road. By setting aside, the third is open space, which we're a little in excess of that here. This area marked in green would be the open space. This cul-de-sac road here is a little over 1,300 lineal feet. Most of these lots are around an acre, which is the size requirement under the phosphorid. Again, we just, we show single-family homes, wells, septics. At the time, we've been before you, at least once, kind of talking about the piece informally. We started the project kind of late fall, and as you know, in Bolton, a lot of the soil testing requires dry soils. So, we've done a substantial amount of testing, which, these are all kind of test holes through here, going right into late, late fall, early winter, until we finally, the soil's got too much to continue perks. So, some of these lots, we haven't been able to perk, but we've gone out and we've probed, and that's one of the things that we want to discuss, where, you know, we've done sufficient level of work, but we're confident that we can get soil testing on these, but, you know, as you look at the waiver letter, that's one thing, we don't have perk tests on each individual lot. But what we've done is we've got a representative sample to support both plans. I can kind of quickly kind of go into the soils as we get into that. This would be the high point of the site here, you know, this is kind of the crown of the site, and it slopes down. As you kind of come up to the summit of this hill here, kind of beyond here is where we start getting into a real shallow depth of ledge. This band here, we were able to get perk tests, we did that during the dry time of year, it was actually a different year that we did this. We had a few slower perks in here, there was one on one lot that was actually over 60 minutes per inch. As we come down, we actually had a good band of good material here, we actually had good perks, deep soils. As you come over to this side of the property, again, there's a little valley that comes through here, it kind of goes, not really between, it's kind of a high point between two wetlands, but that's a low area, and again, we've got a good band of suitable soils that we identified through there. As we kind of get beyond here, and you can kind of tell by the topography, we get again back into shallow depth of ledge.
What's that hydraulic soil group?
Uh, so it's mixed, I mean, you get your chat hollis, which when you hit the ledge, it's pretty sandy, and then as we get out into the back, we have more of a paxin, which is 10 to 15 mil perking.
But what's the, is it like B, C, D?
Uh, it's probably a mix of B and C. Again, it's preliminary plan, but we've kind of generally shown how we would address drainage. We've just identified a few areas adjacent to the roadway where we targeted to do our stormwater management system.
So, what do you have on the septic front right now? You've got a good feeling of confidence, do you have some of these lots with septic plans, but not all of them, is that the idea?
Well, it's still preliminary, so sure, obviously, we have any septic plants, we don't need definitive lot.
Okay.
But yeah, I would say almost, these are just lots we have.
Do you, I know it's preliminary, but what are you anticipating potentially for the stormwater management areas you've got outlined here?
So...
Those two B.
I know kind of Greg's targeted this area down on the end here, you know, there's an area here, the way the road kind of comes in, we're 2% in, and then we go up like 8% through here, and then it kind of levels off up here on the back, so it's a mix of 2 and 1%. He's got a lower area here to kind of collect and kind of run this down.
Are all these like just extended basins?
Detention ponds, yeah.
That's it?
Yeah.
Are they going to be infiltrating or not?
Um, I would say probably not, yeah.
Probably not.
But we haven't done perks in those areas, but just, there may be a couple of them that we would have put enough material that we could actually...
Is there any concern with the close proximity of the stormwater management systems to the wells?
Um, not really, just the fact that they're deep bedrock wells.
How deep do those wells?
On average, I'd say 350 feet.
Okay. I know if it was a public wall, you can't do it within like the 100 feet.
Yeah, so it's different, yeah, from a water standpoint, exactly.
But this doesn't...
It's a somewhat protected, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Brandon, can you speak about the natural heritage area?
Yes.
That's first of all.
So, there is a small area of the site identified as natural heritage and danger species. So, you know, once we get closer with the definitive plan, obviously, we'd have, once we have contours and grading through here, we would file with the natural heritage and danger species program, just to make sure that there wasn't any potential take of habitat. And that's kind of where, we showed this as open space, there is another five acres of just kind of excess land here, you know, whether we can reconfigure some stuff, or this could potentially be open space. So, much of this mapped area could be just open space. It's really going to be the drainage basin and just a small portion of the road coming in.
Even without that, you're over the percentage you need to be, right? What, where do you need to be?
I think 30.
Okay.
18 acres, so we're at like 22 plus that five, so yeah, we're in excess.
About half, more or less.
I mean, that parcel lay is not fully usable anyway, right?
No.
Right. And it's all contiguous, it's not, it's not split up, it's that shape, right?
So, I have a question kind of for the town, Andrew, for you. So, just, you know, thinking it's, having just a detention infiltration system so close to like within residential is not necessarily the ideal.
Yeah.
One thing to maybe consider is using, you know, could you do a bioterrorist or use a different sort of low-impact development technique? And one of the techniques, I was just wondering, because you said you had a band of some pretty decent soils...
Yeah.
Would be a permeable pavement or something like that. I don't know how open the town is to, because eventually this would be turned over to maintaining that type of system.
Why would you do that? Infiltration?
Yeah, so basically, you can design the system so it goes straight in and it treats it, and it treats it before it infiltrates in the ground, and you eliminate having to truck it or capture it and, you know, have it discharge into these basins. So, you now are able to leave more of the natural land area as usable space. It's still, it's, you know, it would still be just one of open space, but you're not having these big detention basins that...
I mean, the other thing is, I mean, just type like more of an open drainage type system.
Yeah.
You know, similar to, I mean, it does, once you kind of get up here, it does level off, you know, if you were to do some sort of a swale drainage.
Yes, if we could sheet flow some of it.
We did that at a trail, I mean, it was tough, you know, with all the grades and everything up there, but it does level off. It's been mixed, homeowners having the swale kind of in the front yard between them and the road, but no, it's certainly an option we could look at.
And you can make...
Yeah, given that, or a detention basin.
Yeah.
I mean, it may not work everywhere.
Yeah.
You may need to be able to do some basins where, you know, it doesn't...
Yeah.
And like, you know, back here, you're, it's not right at the front, you know, I'm just thinking here, you're right in between some houses, I know you've got wetlands there, but then to kind of, if there's ways to potentially look at it when you're doing, in a design, to think of some other ways to mitigate stormwater other than these basins, I'd like to see some of that.
Good suggestion, and obviously, we haven't quantified.
Yeah, so it's...
We've targeted these areas, but I don't even know if we would need all of them.
Yeah.
Or what it would be, but yeah, certainly.
I mean, I like the fact that you're decentralizing it, and it's not all going to one big pot.
Yeah.
That's definitely a good, a good thing. But if there's ways to introduce some other BMPs other than just the extended basin, that would be...
Danielle, what do you think about like gravel wetlands or BMPs that sort of replicate wetland areas? That may work.
I mean, that might work, especially those two over there, where you're so close, and you're not necessarily right next to the houses, I mean, that would be a great area to just extend that there. I'm not so sure, I know you're right next to one here, but again, I think you're just so close to the house, I think that would be the first one you'd want to try to get rid of if you could.
Yeah.
So, you didn't have, you know, I just feel for these two homeowners to be, you know, basin there.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's...
But you got a mini, so it's, you know, one or the other, so either swale or, the other thing is potentially, you could have it, if it allows for sheet flow, sheet flowing into spells at a bioretention areas that actually have a more aesthetic appealing thing.
Right. I think a lot of these would be kind of, they're obviously the low areas, you'd be burming up the low side.
Yeah. But could you do a biore, like a right adjacent to the street?
Yeah, I think you could. And also, I think if you did it with a mix of plantings, I mean, Northwoods, for example, the first house on the right, the basin's right there, they did a pretty good job of getting some good screen trees in around that, I know Century Mills will think that because they've got some houses right up on it as well, so...
Yeah. So, just some different, some different options.
So, we can continue taking comments, the other thing, just to kind of just add here, obviously Fred and Mike is here, Fred's reviewed the application package, and we've gone back and forth a few times, just kind of going through Fred's comments. We can continue taking comments, we can, we can go through his comments and kind of our responses.
Yeah, Fred, you can go through the comments.
Erica, did you give him the letter?
I did, I gave him the...
So, Brandon and I met a week or so ago, and his letter dated July 5th, if you have that in front of you, is a response to what we had, what I had for comments. So, I like, it's, I think it's just easy enough to look through them. The first one, it says the theme of map reference, he had an older map reference, he's changed it accordingly.
Is there a 100 foot plan associated with this?
No.
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 Across the street.
Okay, okay.
And then the second one, and Brandon had mentioned it was a soil testing, the, what he's, I understand that there was some other tests that were done that are on the plan, right, Brandon?
We just informed him.
Informal tests.
Yeah.
Now, the problem I see is this, this, the phosphorid development number lots is based on the traditional. So, if it can't be proven, there's 18 lots, by the way, I don't know if you mentioned it before, so if not all the traditional lots have proven tests on them. So, and I know this is preliminary, so even if it's accepted, it doesn't mean it's going to have to be 18. So, that's where it comes into play. Let's say two of them didn't have adequate testing, then down to 16, and there should be a 16 lot. So, it's up to the town. As you can see, he's, he states the lots in number two under the phosphorid and traditional lots that don't have the official testing, so to this way, quit it.
Yeah.
And also in stormwater management areas.
So, the idea would be, I mean, obviously, we're just waiting for things to dry out, and the like, the best case scenario would be, when we go in to finish testing out for the phosphorid, we would test out those traditional plants, and when we come in for the definitive, obviously, we'd be representing that we have full compliance of that regulation at that time. So, but what we'd like to do is obviously get to the preliminary stage, particularly because it's a major residential, and we've really got to pick a plan.
Yeah.
You know, we'd like to keep moving with this and get more definitive.
I think that makes sense.
Knowing that, you know, it's at our risk, and we've got to prove out those, those other, in order to...
I'd feel very nervous if it wasn't proved out by the final, but preliminary has to keep you, keep your momentum together.
Preliminary doesn't prevent you from reducing later.
It doesn't even prevent you from...
It just gives you the...
Say it this way, I'm rejecting the whole project.
That's why preliminary is planned, yeah, yeah.
It's hard, I'm just saying, it doesn't have any bearing on the final plan, it's just to get, so they go off in the right direction more than the wrong direction.
Yeah, non by, just...
Non by.
Yes, so we, you know, both at the expense of a hard in hearing, we're going to bring in a plan that you guys want to see.
Because that's the response on number two. Number three, the site distance is, what is happening is at the entrance to this road, and the same thing on the traditional, to the left and right side, there's some large trees in the right of way, three-foot diameter trees, there's about seven of them going to the north of that intersection there. So, there, and there's one to the south, one or two.
Big old white pine?
Big old white pine, yeah. So, they would have to be removed to get site distance from that intersection. Now...
And you don't want to remove them?
No, he's saying, he's saying remove them. They didn't have it before, but now he's saying remove them.
We want to have the site distance, so obviously, yeah.
Isn't that, I can't picture it.
Well, what happens when you have a tree right in front of you that puts your sight like that, so you can't see...
Yeah, keep pulling out until you can find them.
I gotta check that out, one of my biggest, and I want this process to go forward, but one of my biggest, not concerns, but focus points when I was reviewing this the other day, the town always loves to see a good buffer, that's between the project and the street. I look at this phosphorid plan, and houses are set back pretty far. The old house, we can talk about that absolutely well in a few minutes, it's the only one that's remotely close to the street, the main front road. Everything else is set back. To the extent you can keep that buffer in place, I think that's super. I want to take a good bit of the project.
A good bit of it will be preserved, and I guess the reason is, is, you know, we should kind of show these two wetland areas, but the buffer zones kind of pitched together, so obviously, we're going to be filing an ANRAD to certify the wetland lines, but also a notice and intent to file for the work. And that's why we don't really have any work proposed here other than the road, so all those trees that are in place, they're going to remain there. You can't come in clear and just...
For that whole lot where the existing houses, basically.
Yeah, well, you know, as you come, you have the existing lot all the way around there, it really isn't until you kind of get in the back here that some of that is growing in, so, I mean, you might see...
That's pretty far back there.
It's pretty far back, yeah.
The eye can really only see back to...
Yeah, I mean, that's 175.
That existing house, and a little bit beyond that.
Well, that's, that's 400 feet right there.
Sure.
So, yeah.
Sure.
Scales 111, 180.
Okay, I think that's great.
If you're out there and you're looking at it...
I want to see those trees, yeah.
The tendency is, even if you're in your car to go in that driveway and pull back out and see, the tendency is to nose out when you have to look at it from...
15? 15 feet off?
15 feet back. 15 feet back off the pavement. So, when you are there, the trees are right...
It's blocked, so that you can see it before, but you can't see it then.
Right, and you can see it as you nose out, but the technical right way is 15 feet. That's something that gets not thought of when you're out there physically trying to look.
Is that driveway for the...
And Brandon, I mean, the same thing came up.
Yeah, basically, right, right.
Totally, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, 15 feet back was great, but there's that, there's that...
That anymore tree.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the same, same exact situation.
So, usually, I mean, I would say, almost every subdivision requires some modification of the existing trees. Interesting thing with this is, every other road is scenic road, so it requires the filing. Where Hudson Road isn't scenic road, it really is a good mechanism, you know, for the water trees, but yeah, the intent would be to...
That's awesome.
I think, you just said three of them?
No, there's seven of them.
Oh, there's seven, sorry.
To the...
What kind of...
White pine.
Big, big, old white pine trees.
Yeah, they're good sized trees. Can you flip that around to the traditional side?
Yeah.
And still talking about the site distance, could we have to look at the traditional to make sure that works first? Okay, so it's the same situation on the right-hand side.
That's pretty much the same.
Now, on the left-hand side, going south to the right on the plan, there's topography in the way, brush tube of topography, so they have a plan which will submit what the other plans admit, 8 and 11, plans showing how that would be regraded.
Okay, because you need to kind of have it...
Right, you can't see towards, it's too high, it's above the three and a half feet that your eye level is at when you're sitting at the car, so that's, going north, right in, can you, right to that trip bend, right there, a little back, a little further, there's, physically, there's a high point in the road, but they went out survey-wise and confirmed that you can still see. If you're out there, just by, just looking at visually, it looks like it's questionable, but they confirmed, I asked them about that, and they confirmed it.
Where's the primitive driveway that, on this map?
Right here.
Okay.
Yeah.
What's that house?
It's just, it's like an old...
Right, yes, okay, I pulled in that, oh, yeah.
Sorry, no, it's right, right here. So, this, it's right next to this wetland, and then that isolates on this side, exactly, right there. So, there would be some trees that have to be removed, but when we looked at that and field measured it, we had 400 feet.
425, I believe it was.
Where's the existing house, Gorham, a four-mill road?
It's not on that plan.
It's not on it?
It's not on the traditional plan, but...
Yeah.
That's right.
Why'd you take it off the traditional plan?
Um, I think maybe where the road is, it's basically impacted, I see, the traditional layout.
I'm sorry, not the existing house on this lot.
Yeah.
The existing house, as you're heading north on Hudson Road, before you get to Mill Road, it's a little white house?
That's the next house to that one.
There's a house here.
Trying to get my perspective.
Yeah, and then there's, it kind of gets, there's a low area here, there's like a little...
And then Mill Road.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, is the intent to keep the existing structure under the phosphorid? Is that still the plan?
So, that's the 18th unit.
Yes, it's one of them, yes. You can call it whatever number you want, but it's one of them.
Talk about that a little bit, I kind of envisioned that as, it's my pie in the sky, but you've got, and we talked about it a little bit, an affordability requirement, obviously you have an option for fee and lieu of.
Yeah.
You would keep that structure, but you would sell it as a market rate house?
Uh, most likely, I mean, we're open to discussion on how to resolve that issue. I think, as we talked about, that house is in very tough condition.
Yeah.
So, it's, basically, it's no more than a house lot, so the idea would be, you'd have to put significant funds into retrofitting it, but I think the idea, we like the whole idea of having the historic house as the first house up front, and then you go back to your subdivision.
Okay.
Looks wonderful. As far as the store, we talked about that, you know, do that as a duplex, or do you do, quite honestly, I think we create too many issues.
What's your, what's your preference for that structure? How would you want to see that? You'd want to see it as one of the 18 market rate units, and then deal with affordable otherwise?
Yeah, either we, a fee, or we buy another lot and contribute that way, or what have you.
Okay.
I think, to make it affordable, it's, I just don't think it makes sense.
Sure.
In a neighborhood of $700,000...
No doubt.
Yeah.
Houses. But the prospect of rehabbing it and not raising it is...
It's not profitable, but it, it makes sense, I think.
Okay, it's not a loss.
It, no, I think it's a break even.
We've got to have a structural engineer go through it...
Yeah.
To have the final say.
But there, yeah, there's a lot of lumber to be added to it.
Sure, no, I don't...
And it's existing for...
It's scary. Yeah. What's the timing on your exploration?
Uh, well, once we get approval of the plan, digging, I mean, can we save it? Absolutely, you can always save it, so I'm sort of gambling on how much it's going to cost to save it.
Okay.
So, I've done a couple of these before, you know, you just assume the...
Sure. When was it built? It is historic, right?
It is historic, 1728.
There you go.
Okay, so dealing with it one way or another, discussing the process.
I mean, I like the idea of keeping it.
Okay.
Area.
That's great.
I mean, I think it sets up nice for the whole development, it's a historic piece, no problem, and it's, you know, it's always great when something historic works with It's, you know, it's always great when something historic works with marketing.
Yeah.
That's great.
What do you know about Martha? It's history.
The James Keyes case. It has 1728 carved in one of the attic beams, which could or could not be authentic. It's actually the brother of the person who owned my house, Joseph Keyes. And apparently, it was a farm at one point. Um, and they came from Lancaster. And, um, I wanted to suggest that perhaps if you used the loop, it'd be called Keyes Run, or James Keyes Run, which would help, or could be Keyes Farm if we establish it was a farm. It isn't on, as, it isn't on Dorothy Mayo's farm, uh, report from the turn of the 20th century, but, um, I mean, probably it was a farm. Little Pond used to be called Keyes Pond. It was about halfway, well, not, from between my house, 447 Main, and this house is 258 Hudson.
The Keyes way works for me.
I think we interrupted your, uh, your commentary, but I want to go back to that. So, I guess we're talking about.
You wanted, though, Erica, I have, um, an email that responds to all these after.
Run?
Yeah, that responds to all these, so what I'm saying is in.
Okay.
I wrote an email.
Okay.
Next one is lot seven has been designed and revised to, it was just under an acre, um, on its original submittal. I have to look at it again, I missed something then on the submit going to Brandon, so I have to look at it again, but it can be adjusted if it's given, if it's not under, it's 300, two to 300 feet less, swiftly, uh, less than an acre. Number five is okay, there's been change to the, update the shade factor. The detail has been updated, um, it is a 50 foot right of way, they had it on the detail, they put it as a 40 foot right of way, so it meets the requirements. Number seven, um, and eight, and number seven shows that six and eight are backland lots, that's been put on the plan now. Number eight is the waiver, has been corrected, they had it as a lane, but it should be a minor street based on traffic flow, estimated traffic flow, and the 50 foot right of way and 24 feet of pavement. They're asking, we'll go to waivers in a moment, they're asking for a waiver of 20 feet on a pavement.
And we, on what subdivisions have we done that? Potters, right?
Farm, Northwoods.
Okay.
On a Century Mill.
With, um.
You asked for it on, um.
What about the main street?
One, one of the actual.
Okay.
Uh, ten, ten.
I'm thinking of ones that are established, and I can picture, Houghton is not a narrow road. It's not an overly narrow road.
No. That's 15 lots there.
With the 20 foot, is that, is this showing 20 feet right here?
20, plus, plus a Cape Cod burn beyond that.
Um, can you get the fire truck in and out of there without any issues running?
Yeah. Yeah, and obviously, given those other subdivisions, it's kind of gone before.
Right.
Well, that'd be my concern.
One of the big things was, the one complaint with fire is that with the.
Can you turn her off?
That's why even here, we're just showing it as a road, instead of having those islands in the middle. Both DPW and fire kind of let us see those. Go away, so we can get.
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, if the fire truck can get in and out of the no call, I like to reduce, and less pavement is better, I think.
Yep, I agree.
And number nine about the shade trees, um, they, originally, they were asking for a waiver on it, but they're showing shade trees along the roadway.
I like that.
Yeah, I think we took that, just based on the last one we had.
Okay, why'd you add it back? It's your preference, you think it shows better?
Yeah, overall, I mean, discussed it, yeah, I mean, it's.
Okay.
It looks fine.
I like that.
Yeah.
And number 10 is the lot with, um, I have to check, this, this, um, this video came yesterday afternoon, so I haven't, um, checked that out yet. Saw some things I've had in the office just this morning, picked up some plans, and I had to just be there briefly, so I didn't get it completely, but the lot with, just want to make sure they're all showing the traditional, once again, showing that they can get 18 lots. And the 11th one is a waiver request, and we'll go for that when we, um, presents the waivers.
Do you want to go through those now?
Sure. Uh, so, a lot of these are the same waivers we continue, um, we've done the last few. Existing trees along, uh, existing right of ways, um, the requirement basically doesn't specify, just says, you know, all, all the trees that are existing, and what we've said is we'll locate the ones that basically affect site distance, you know, to see if we can preserve any of those existing trees, and also see which ones need to be removed.
Other than the site distance issue on the seven white pines, which I want to check out, because it's always a good argument, that safety versus kind of a clear cutting concern. Um, I'd, I'd love you guys to focus on not clear cutting to the extent possible, especially right up by that right of way.
Yes.
Folks like it, I think the buyers of the houses like it a lot, it's consistent with the town.
And again, the theme, I mean, we're trying to set everything back.
No doubt.
Same thing.
It should be a waiver.
Plus, this is all, these are wet ones and buffer zones, so you would have to file.
I think we're blocking out.
Yes.
Yep.
I think the only thing is those trees, and with the traditional's another situation, but that's not what they're proposing.
Yeah.
So, it's the trees and.
I want to look at those.
Yeah. Don't get hit me.
Come back. Hardly sight lines off this extra lot, off, down, it's a lot, 18 there.
Yeah, um.
Little orphan down there.
It's probably very similar, it's like the same location as the traditional road, so.
Yeah, sure.
480 going that way, whatever.
I think it's a little better, because the traditional road, see how that's right between, that where that driveway entrance is, what you're showing?
This is the driveway entrance right here, yeah.
Oh, it's over there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because it's kind of goes between these two.
Oh, those, I see, the other two, yeah. So, it's about the same spot, right?
Yeah.
So, the same thing might have to be done for that, grading wise, to the, to the south.
Yeah, thank you, you've got some steep grids in there.
It's, it's impossible to see through it, it's.
Do you have any state permits that are going to be needed for this project?
Uh, well, obviously, official law of life.
So, with the removal of more than five public shade trees, are you filing NEPA?
Um, I'd be, two or more, probably, maybe more than two.
No, you just need a state permit and then meeting a threshold.
I don't want to say, I, I have to look into it, yeah. Obviously, we have to.
I just be, you might want to check that, because you're clearly meeting the threshold with removing the more than five public shade trees in the right of, existing right of way.
Yeah.
But if you don't have a state permit, you would be triggered into it.
Right.
Um, so, but if you have the permit, then you might want to look into that.
The question would only be with the natural heritage, whether or not.
Okay.
That would be considered a permit, or if it's no take, it's not really a permit, so.
Yeah, I'm not sure that one works, so.
It's a question of whether I think detention pond, does it take or does it change that will trigger anything for natural heritage?
Yeah. And guess what it was? If, if we filed and they consider a take, and you have to do a comprehensive management plan, I think that's.
That's absolutely a state permit. But if it's a no take, I don't, but even if it's a filing, that's what I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Um, and being triggered.
It's kind of, obviously, one of the first things we've got to explore.
Yeah.
Um, once we figure out which direction we're going with the two plans, just because we want to get that out also, too.
Yeah, hopefully it's a permit.
Uh, streets shall be laid out so intersect at intervals which permit the block size to be in a range of 600 to 1,200 feet. Um, and essentially, that's between a street intersection and a street intersection. 600 feet to 1,200. Uh, both plans, uh, in relation to Danforth Lane were less than that. Um, I think it's about 400 feet on the phosphorid and 500, 490, 395 on the phosphorid, 490 on the traditional. Um, and again, we're asking for a waiver on that, just given the vehicle loads through there, speed loads, everything.
Where is that proposed curb cut on the phosphorid? It's right where the existing curb cut is today?
Yeah. Horizontal, vertical curve alignment.
That's something I want to look at, too, in person. I bet you it's fine, but I want to take a look at that.
Can I, the marble will go upon each one?
Yeah.
If I can spot it. Um, so, the first one, we're all sex issue on the trees, the second one, it's really up to the planning board on that, it's. I was out there, not in peak traffic, but I didn't see any car, and I went up in Fourth Road to drive up there, so I didn't see any cars at all coming onto the.
Yeah.
Onto Hudson Road. It's, um, it's a regulation you have as a planning board, and so it's a waiver, as he's asking here.
Yep.
Horizontal, vertical curve alignment, um, basically, the road says, I mean, the reg is to match your vertical and horizontal curves, which, and we kind of talked about in the last one, you know, so basically, if you've got a surging degree curve going this way, the way your regulations are written, match the vertical, which in this case, obviously, the vertical curves and the horizontal curves are different just depending on topography and.
Yeah.
Today.
Yeah.
I don't see an issue with that from a technical design standpoint.
Okay.
Or high usability.
Is that a regulation you even need it? Is that something?
I don't think so. It's more of a highway regulation.
I was going to say.
And they got copied in from, you're not the only ones who have it. So, it's a highway regulation more.
Yeah, okay.
Not a lane or a minor street regulation.
So, minor street width, um, 50 foot right of way with a 24 foot pavement width, and we talked about this a little bit going down to the 20 foot. Uh, this plant shows, still shows a 50 foot right of way, but I know in those other subdivisions, we've actually gone down to a 30 foot. So.
I think, I think we'd prefer that at 40, what you propose.
And I know that it's been done in the past, but I think every time, you don't know if there's a problem with the fire department, because it may not be brought out to the public eye, but I think every time this comes up, and I think this time, too, we should state that the fire department's acceptance of it, in case they change and they forget to tell you they don't want that anymore.
You've got bigger trucks now.
For various reasons, I mean, if it wants to snow, you don't have 20 feet anymore.
Sure.
And it's not just the, I mean, no, it's the crossing paths going in, up half of the road coming down, if they have their ambulance down and they've got a fire truck going up. I'm not saying it's adequate or not adequate, but it's up to the fire department, I think, even more than the planning board. Same thing on the next one.
Yeah, I know, I know. On the last one, uh, we sat down with our chief to talk about that, and that, a few months ago, it was good, and, um, obviously, at the fifth stage, we'll be sitting down and talk about protection systems, those kinds of things.
He was good on what?
On the width of it.
Conversation.
Yeah. Uh, dead end streets, uh, the regulations for cul-de-sac are minimum of 250, max of 500. Um, as we talked about, this is a little more than 1,300 mill feet, which, again, is just, is consistent, uh, for low impact development, uh, previous phosphorid subdivisions in town. Do you want to weigh on that?
That's the same comment.
Uh, lighting?
The fire department, yourselves.
Yeah.
Make your decisions, this.
Lighting, uh, is a requirement, basically, at the intersection and the cul-de-sac, and we've talked on several projects back and forth on those, um, and we're asking to waive that.
Karen, I'm concerned that the planning board's discretion again. A lot of places don't want lighting, other places, people want lighting, so.
I think it's fine, I think the town typically doesn't want it.
Right. And the last one, we go back and forth, sidewalks, um, walkways and bike paths. As shown now, we don't, we don't have a sidewalk. And again, you know, as we looked at the other one, the previous subdivision that we filed on Main Street, um, there was a destination, you know, we're trying to get somewhere, as, as I look at this subdivision, and you look at Hudson Road, you know, having the sidewalk here really isn't getting anybody to anything that continues. It really, the primary function would be, um, just people within the neighborhood walking back and forth on the road. And, and again, just historically in town, we've gone back and forth, I know in Northwoods, we had sidewalks, with the developer, Chuck Black, who came in and asked for the waiver after the fact.
Yeah.
And at that point, you're just giving, most people would probably block within the road right of way. We're open on that, but I guess the preference.
Could you do just a side open one, I mean, were you anticipating just a side open one side?
Well, that's all it's required, yes, that's what we.
Let's, uh, don't we request some money for a mobility fund or something?
We do, and that's what they're.
I think it's a good idea, we've talked about this issue.
Okay.
At nauseam, and that, there is a mobility problem in town, but it's not within new enclosed subdivisions with cul-de-sacs. It's elsewhere, so I like what you propose, thank you.
Brandon, is this anywhere near open space, like, I don't know, Danforth?
Yeah, Danforth, this, this piece here kind of a butt's in the back here and kind of goes around.
Is there a way that we could do a trail easement or something that would allow people to connect to that open space? I think that would be a good option, too. I don't know if that open space.
There is a trail back there.
Yeah, it's a trail that kind of goes through, that's why I thought it should continue, but it's potentially an edge, so.
Yeah, I think. No, you're absolutely right, if it's not that big chunk, it's something like back there. Yeah, the butt, you guys, I shot it on another plan.
Yeah.
It's that, okay.
That's, that's it right there, this piece, and I did the same thing.
I thought it came out somewhere to the, to the gas line. If a trail off, one of the trails off Danforth came out to the gas line, I thought.
That's what I thought, too, but looking at the assessor's maps, the GIS, it's, they have the danger. Which could be, and he's obviously, you know, all the way through on this side. Um, it's something we can look at, you know, especially if we have this here. Um, and I think it'd be, it's just the proximity of the houses here, you know, we could do something to, you know, with this a butter here to kind of bring it together, I think.
Something, because, yeah, we, as you know, we've been trying to do that on these new ones pretty successfully so far.
So, I mean, the consensus of the town is not to have the sidewalk along there?
It has been generally, I mean, the wind can change, but it has been generally.
It's not, we're not trying, we're not trying to connect to anything.
Okay.
If it's just, it's a dead end road, you know.
Butters and where people in the neighborhood walking and.
People walking.
Yeah, one of them has traffic. They don't really get maintained, so usually, it's the neighborhood that kind of ends up maintaining stuff, especially in the winter. And then, once they decay, or some, you know, that's just, you know, what do you do with them? That's the biggest criticism, you look at, as you look at subdivisions 15 years.
I prefer the payment and lieu of input it towards town center or fixing that side. Or squeezing both if you're, if you're reducing the road width and you're not having sidewalks, kind of giving the kids less space to safely play in. Which is what the sidewalks and.
I agree, that's, we have a discussion.
Kind of squeezing both sides of it, which. They're kind of, um, I don't want to say it's an issue, but a safe place for bus stops. Do you see envision something on the bottom there? A safe place to.
Yeah, I mean, we could probably look at something down there, obviously, you've got the cul-de-sac on the other end.
Maybe even got like a little cherry here. I don't know exactly what, but it was an issue at Century Mill.
Yeah.
Little shelter or something.
Yeah.
Something, I don't know, and it doesn't have to be a shelter, but.
So many areas.
You can have a pull off, like a pull off, that the bus can.
Yeah. I'll let her squeeze by, by the wet ones right there or something.
Yeah, that existing house.
Yeah. I just know it's an issue in the past.
Yeah, because you were talking more for the kids to stand at.
Yeah, right, that's what I'm saying.
Not a pull off.
Not a pull off, just a place to stand.
Yeah.
I want to give folks in the room a chance to chime in, but I don't want to cut you off, two more.
Nope.
I actually have a couple more questions.
Go for it.
Um, uh, distance from a water, water supply for fire?
Yeah, so we anticipate doing a system or, you know.
Okay, so you don't need a waiver for that?
No.
Um, at the cul-de-sac, or you don't know yet?
Uh, I don't know yet.
Okay.
Yeah. Usually, sit down, march, you can see, I mean.
Yeah.
Typically, try to get them closer to the.
After what, 30, 40 thousand gallons?
There are 23,000 gallons of detail, which is interesting with all the other conversations we've, we've had.
Based on the size of a single house, or?
Yeah.
Um, on, so, on the, the old structure, I know, you know, it's in bad shape, and you've seen you're leaning towards doing, uh, inclusion and payment and lieu of, but, I mean, it would be really nice to get some affordable. I know that we talked about in the past, having a disguised duplex or something in the front there. Even if it's in the form of the, you know, even if you have to take the, take the layout of the current structure, because duplex.
Have no problem doing it and absolutely could do it and it would look nice.
Right, because then you have two affordable units.
From a permitting standpoint.
Yeah.
It's up to you guys, quite honestly.
Well, so, right, because if you had two affordable units, it wouldn't be.
Right.
It wouldn't be, um, apples to apples.
Apples to apples.
Right, so we'd have to give some type of waiver, and I don't even know if that's possible, to get the two units. Maybe they're not the same value as one, but at least we get two units. We would hope into it if, if it's something that you would entertain.
Absolutely, no question.
Okay.
No question.
I mean, we've talked about this, at 3%.
It wouldn't change, honestly, it wouldn't change the cost of the construction by much, except for, you know, whatever, 10% heavy.
And, and I mean, duplexes today aren't like what you envisioned from 30 years ago, you don't even know it.
No, you don't at all.
Yeah.
And if the intent was to keep the shape of the existing structure, we could make it work.
Yeah, absolutely.
What else?
Good.
Martha, introduce yourself, please.
Yes, Martha Reddington, representing the Bolton Historical Commission. I have a few questions. Are there any stone walls within this acreage that are within the boundaries of the entire acreage?
Mostly no. The stone walls on here, even though this is preliminary, where we could do a perimeter survey already, you can see the stone walls all the way around. There's remnants of a stone wall that kind of comes through here, but in this area, as you kind of walk through, it's pretty sporadic. It's actually a really nice wall up in here, but it kind of ends right at this wall over here.
Okay, that trail, by the way, was built by an Eagle Scout who lived, I think, on Danforth Lane. And I think Conservation Commission would have information about that. Why do swimming pools need fences and detention and retention plans don't?
They do if they're over a certain depth.
Oh, really?
Yes, if they're over four feet deep, they need to have fences around them.
Okay, are any of these units planned to be solar energy units? And I just wanted to mention that, you know, solar energy is great, but if we cut all the trees so the suns can get to the roof, the sun can get to the roof, we need to have those trees to put oxygen back into the atmosphere. So, I would just like to encourage that you save as many specimen trees as possible. People do love trees, even though they don't like to rake them, so they hire someone else to do the leaf raking. It just seems like trees are cut kind of flipply, and it's becoming really evident that there's a contradiction between solar energy and trees.
There's not a lot of specimen trees on the property.
It's, they're mostly smaller.
They're mostly smaller and pretty scrubby.
Yeah.
It was lumbered off about ten or twelve years ago.
There you go.
Yeah, so most Indians, I think, was taken.
Yeah, this was cut.
Yeah.
The back piece, I think, was different, right? So, I think there are more trees that come back without open spaces, yeah.
You know, I mean, you could barely see the house before they cleared, kind of turned into a field. Everything to the left of the house, to the north of the house was cleared. I remember that now.
Well, you know, when I was a kid, it was a dairy farm, so, you know, it's grown a little.
Okay.
So, it's got a headline.
So, I know that for a fact, Jack, that was, that was a dairy farm?
Oh, yeah, I used to get out and...
Was it Bonazzoli's or?
Bonazzoli's owned it, yeah.
Oh, okay. Good, so I'm surprised there aren't more stone walls then, because the cows would have needed a two and a half foot.
Bonazzoli's ran a construction business. They just use caravans and leftover steel.
You know that one? Oh, so it's a waste site, okay.
Well, I was kind of curious when you talked about, what did you call it, the primitive road? That was the road to the junkyard.
Picking parts, picking parts.
And one more question, just sort of personally. Did you mention what, how many bedrooms are these houses mostly going to be? Three, four?
Four, yeah.
Okay, but did you mention seven hundred fifty thousand dollars enough? I mean, are the, I just was curious, are these going to be mansions or are they going to be more?
The market, market rate.
In tune with, you know, what we think of as classic...
Four bedroom market rate. Yeah, more classic, we're not looking to do the five, six thousand square foot mansions.
Rather than, you know, all the little angles and things that Rufus Nightmare and all that. I was just curious, not that people are going to see them, but that's part of the charm of having...
I would, and I honestly don't think people are looking for five thousand square foot houses anymore.
Sure.
Excellent.
So.
They definitely take longer to sell than that.
They absolutely do. No, I think you're kind of in that thirty-five hundred square foot classic one.
Do you have self-perform, in terms of construction, site development, or will you sub it out? I know it's none of my business for this, I'm curious.
No, typically, we sub everything out, and we have a couple people that self-perform certain tasks. We'll have some carpenters with the task, but...
But site is probably a third party?
Site would be a third party.
Okay.
Just one more thing, the Starco Commission, I'm sure the planning board would prefer, if you do have stone walls that need to be relocated, that no stones leave the property, that they're utilized somehow and kept in that area rather than tucked off.
Absolutely.
Because stones are valuable.
Yes, they are.
And of course, if they're a boundary line, they're not supposed to be relocated.
Yeah.
Thank you.
No, I, we've done a lot of work in the suburban historic district. I'm used to working and keeping everything looking nice, and quite honestly, at the end of the day, if it looks nice, people buy it.
It's a win-win.
It's a win-win.
Thank you.
Any other questions from audience members? Please introduce yourself.
Yeah, Bob Henderson. Actually, Brandon helped me with my house long, a time ago, across the street. I don't know if you remember me, Brandon?
I do, Bob, yes.
Yeah, and definitely appreciate everything you've done for me. The one thing, I have a couple of questions. One is on the first map, the original map. On that first entrance slash exit to the left, I was just wondering, Brandon, is that coming straight at my driveway, so everybody who's coming down that at night is going to shine their lights in my house?
I think it's showing that dash buff is on the line to the right, about an inch and a half.
You're down, sit back in the woods a little bit, straight up there.
Yeah, but wouldn't at least fall off the trees?
Yeah, so your driveway just shows up, this is the guardrail right here, so your driveway is... I would say about three hundred feet to the south side.
To the south?
Yeah, so your, sorry, your driveway is right here.
Okay, good.
And this is it, yeah. And again, we don't want to build that. Is that?
That's also traditional, which they're not planning on.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I'm hoping the cul-de-sac, because, yeah, I'm not sure I'd like that one. The other thing was, I was just kind of curious, because I deal with traffic on Route eighty-five all the time, and it just builds up on one seventeen, and the four corners coming down to Hudson. So, I was wondering, yeah, there's a division going in on Century Mill. Is this division going in and traffic's not getting any better for it, so?
Agreed.
Yeah.
Unless we want to buy all the open land.
That's right.
More beaver, more beaver.
There's not a whole lot we can do to, I mean, you know, to prevent the development. It's just a matter of managing it.
No, I'm not saying that. I'm just, actually, it's probably more directed to the town. I mean, for me, because it takes extra time for me to pull up onto one seventeen to go down in the other direction. So, you know, I'm just kind of curious, what is, you know, from the town's perspective, you know, what are they reviewing too, and what they consider, you know, when these divisions, you know, obviously, we can't afford to buy, you know, come out?
As part of this, as part of this process, we can, we can request a traffic study. Correct?
Yeah, I think we can. Can we with a residential?
We'll end with this.
And we update our subdivision limits to allow that, yeah.
I'm biased against them. I don't think they, tell us anything we don't...
I'm just telling, I'm just saying that we could request the traffic study.
I mean, typically for residential, I don't know if it's really...
I'm just saying that we could, yeah.
So, just a kind of, just general comments, I think, I think those are good comments for the town as we look at, number one, the zoning of town, because obviously, almost the entire town is residential zone, so that's basically what you're going to get. But also, as you look at, I mean, certainly also as a resident, you know, traffic is a big issue on one seventeenth of the towns, but I don't know how much of that is locally produced, and most of that is through traffic, you know, and...
Yeah, right. That's the problem, though, because you've got two-way traffic on one seventeen, and it could be coming in from the other towns, but I can't pull out onto one seventeen when I need to.
It's a collector road in all the additional towns around. Well, you can get traffic lights and...
Yeah, so I'm not really too concerned about the traffic on Route eighty-five. Sometimes it takes me a while to pull out of my driveway, but most of the time, you know, it's always hitting the intersections half of the path.
Well, I mean, just as a side, I mean, the traffic on one seventeen, being a hassle to everybody is actually a big concern for any potential business, or the current businesses on one seventeen, so it definitely has to be looked at in the long run.
Other thoughts?
Just, since you brought it up, because it is a good point, and it's irrelevant for you to know.
Please introduce yourself, fair enough.
I'm sorry.
Please introduce yourself.
Yes, my name is Pat Graham, a resident, Bolton resident, nineteen years. The question, I think it's for another discussion, but we'd like to understand who's responsible for it, is consistent with the implementation of the two thousand six master plan, which includes moderating traffic concerns as well as encouraging, other than single-family homes to move in, because that will reduce that traffic obligation. So, it'd be helpful to understand what the planning board plans to do in regard to some encouraging these other initiatives for other units that wouldn't be exacerbating the community traffic, that's all. And these units probably would, you know, if they're four-bedroom houses. So, understood, you know, it's a well-designed plan, but that obviously isn't going to lead to a traffic problem.
Bigger problem, no doubt. Other thoughts?
Who, does the planning board address that issue?
We, yeah, we work on the master plan. I mean, we can, we actually, at our last meeting, we're discussing if we should open up the master plan again, since it's been over ten years.
It calls for it every five years.
So, actually, when, in the last meeting, we talked about, as a committee on the side, going through and seeing what we thought would need to be updated.
Yeah.
Before we, we'll send, email it to Erica. Look at that list and then determine if we should create a subcommittee to readdress that.
Study certain parts of it, maybe not all of it, we have hot buttons to it, just look at it.
But, yeah, we want, we wanted to create, like, yeah, like, study if we're just going to open up part of it or the whole thing, or...
Great idea.
Determine the scope before we create a subcommittee, but...
All right, Butter?
Yeah, well, Jack Sargent, I live just a little left there. Just a couple of things, I mean, I think, I think the phosphor plant is obviously the way to go. And a couple of things to get thrown in, the tree situation down the street. I think if you had an arborist go look at it, he'll probably tell you those trees have got to come down. One of them died and came down years ago, they're not in very good shape. Every winter, there's big, huge limbs that break off and end above the street. It's been a problem for a long time, so I, I mean, they're kind of nice trees, but they're not long.
They're kind of not.
They're not going for this world.
Mark Case goes through.
We should have Mark look at it.
Yeah, I mean, if Mark looks at him, he...
He might already know.
Yeah, he probably does, because like I said, one of them was taken down, not so long. I know you had mentioned the idea of using the previous pavement, which I think is a great idea. I've tried to do it in four other towns, and usually, I've never been able to convince people of how good a product it is. Typically, what happens is the DPW looks at it and says, "I can't sand the road, it's going to plug it up."
Wow.
And that's when they, you know...
But they don't, but they don't understand the thing, because you don't actually have to sand it, because the water goes through it.
That's right, you're absolutely right.
It doesn't freeze on the top. I mean, I've designed it in a bunch of different towns, but it's all dependent on the town and the...
Right, and this is a situation where it works perfect.
Have you tried it, Harold, or have you talked about it?
No, I've never, I've never done it.
Now's the window.
But, you know, it's a perfect application for it, because it's a secondary street, has low impacts on the...
And especially if it's flat.
Yeah, it's flat.
I mean, where it's steep, you may have some issues and it's not going to work as well. But when you have a flat, really gentle sloping road, that's going to work the best.
So, is there a certain temperature where it does start to ice?
No, no, so it's porous, so basically, water just goes straight through it.
Right.
And because it goes straight through it, you actually have a sand vegan below it that treats it, so it gets out any of the hydrocarbons, stuff like that, before it continues to...
If it's constructed, constructed right, it will go through.
Correct.
Is it pricey? Is it more...
It is more expensive. So, the, it's, but you have to look in the fact that you're going to eliminate some of your stormwater VMPs. So, yes, the pavement section is more expensive.
So, is it like fine crushed stone that's...
No, it's asphalt, that's just, it's an open grated friction course.
Okay.
I mean, I'll see if I, I might have a sample, and you literally can put it under a faucet and it can straight through.
It's amazing, you can open up a fire hydrant, and ten feet away, there's no water.
And it will just go.
Prime example of how well it works is the parking lot down it, and now I'm going to draw a plane.
Walden Pond?
Walden Pond. It's been there for like thirty years.
And that was never maintained, although it's completely filled now.
I was going to say, I didn't think it was working anymore.
Well, it's still, it's still, it's still on the chase, but it's, it was never vacuum cleaned or anything like that, so, I mean...
But that, you know, this is a prime example, like I said, you know, eliminate all the drainage structure. It's just a great idea to do it, so. But I, overall, I think the plan's fine, I guess, you know, they live next door, but I was trying to buy the property, but they wanted too much for a few years ago, so I didn't buy it. I didn't have as deep a pockets as some other guys, that's all, so, I think, yeah.
Any other thoughts, guys?
I have one other thing, Brandon, just on the well that I have. How, I tried to catch what you were trying to say in the beginning of the meeting, where you were saying depth of the well. You know, I was just wondering, what is the recommendation?
Some of the recommendation, I was saying, the average well, that's about three hundred feet. But, you know, in Bolton, it could be a hundred and fifty feet, could be five hundred, kind of depends on, and it could vary from here to a hundred feet away.
Okay, so, so basically, but there's no chance that any of the runoff from the leach fields and everything like that that are going to be set up with like damage, the well that I have? Like, you know, I'm just wondering, if this, everything's going to kind of fall down my direction, I would imagine?
Yeah, I mean, a lot of it is kind of going to bypass you, and there's a low area here, as you look at most of the housing, it kind of goes this way and then carries under, and then continues to tie into Danforth, downgrading of you. But, yeah, obviously, a fully functioning septic system is going to directly be charged with treatment as we look at stormwater, and that's where we'll go into, you know, great time to demonstrate that we can meet the stormwater management policy and control not only the rate of runoff, but obviously the water quality.
Okay. Unless other members of the board have different opinions, I would favor phosphor to give these guys a little bit of direction in that way.
Yeah, we do need all lots verified, do we have to go on that, or just sort of testing?
And you'll be getting depth of groundwater and stuff like that when you do that for your stormwater?
Yes.
For lunch, you know, so is it...
So, ideally, that's what we'd like to do as part of the definitive stage, is kind of the waiver.
I think that's fine, yeah, if it's locked up during the definitive, it's fine. Now, I don't think it needs to be locked up now.
So, I'd like to make a motion for the subdivision proposed on Assessor's Map three D, listed as Russell ninety-nine A, that we guide the developer to use phosphor versus the tradition. One second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
I was going to say, we should probably close the hearing.
Before we do that?
Well, yeah, as long as the board doesn't, they perceive all the necessary information that they need to vote to make that decision, because we're voted on, so.
Yeah, okay, we'll close it here. I'm making the motion to close the hearing.
Further, further, I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, guys.
Do you want to drop both the waivers and directions?
Well, I was just going to say, I do have a fully married student in here, and we should go with her. She's going to be providing running to that.
Yes, but there's no...
It could work, but it would be... Row.
So, I was looking for, you know, doing a duplex, double unit, portable, as we have requirements. We would like, but however you were, like, guide them or suggest. But if we could, maybe it's one building, though.
It's one building?
But it's still...
But it's still...
I'd like to find out, I'll figure it out.
We need to think, yeah.
I mean, it's for the benefit of the town.
Night, everyone?
Well, no, yeah, I know, I know, I know.
No, no, not you.
I don't understand them.
Or can we chuckle it and say, oh, if it's only two sections each, and then...
It's a similar venture.
No, because they got rid of that house, and they, they...
Oh, that's right.
They're not doing it, yeah.
It's a good question. I think picture takeaways, I want to try to work on that.
I like it, yeah.
I'm just thinking through...
They're all ramifications.
There are a lot of little...
So, why don't, what I, why don't I order this to the board? You guys can go center and it's back to me individually? And then, if you don't mind, designing it tonight, just so you can have it, so that when it's finalized, I can go ahead and...
I think that's great.
I think that's great.
What do we do about the, the two waivers that, you know, we really feel we need?
So, before, you have to, I always reach out to the board and have the fire department provide promise that it'll happen.
I love Brendan. I need your work.
Are the barches here? I am presented there. I was over, a piece of business, Bollum's in charge.
Hold on one second. I'm gonna have to accuse myself due to, I'll post a list to it.
Where do you live?
163 Bear Hill, just two houses over. On the other side of Keith Miles.
Okay.
Yeah, in the greenhouse.
Okay. Very good. 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 Very good.
So, Julie and I moved to Bolton in 1972, and we decided we loved the place because of the open space, and had a little home on Von Hill Road, and we had our daughters Leah and Vanessa, who used to cross country ski from Von Hill Road to Bowers Springs before Von Hill was a conservation area. I go forward to about eight years, and I took her by 40 acres from Bonzoli family, I split half of it with the Hells, with the instant privacy across the street, and Julie and I built our home at 127. We've got 12 acres of frontage with our house, and we also own with the Conservation Commission, half of the 24 acres back here.
How does that work? You, you're both deeded on it, you both own it?
Well, originally the Hells and the barches were cool owners, the Hells gave their a half to the trust.
Ah, okay.
So, Julie and I now talked to our daughters, one lives in Putilla Valley, California, the other lives in Kew, lives with me, and they said, please, deal this property before anything happens to you. So, we decided, I hope the grandchild ends up living here, but what we decided to do is to repay the town, the beauty that we've had over these years, and give them a connection easement from the Von Hill area, back through the Bowers Springs, and also three yard interest, half acres in this land.
So the barch connector, the so-called barch is proposed.
Yeah, well, that was my daughter's idea because I was the incorporator of the trust in 1974. Warren Colby knew I was a lawyer, and he, he broke me into doing the legal work for free, and I was happy to do it because the trust has done a great, we, I'm listening tonight about the difficulty of, of traffic and everything, and without the trust, we wouldn't have bought all these, if we did, and we could afford it. So I've been supportive of the trust a long time, I've talked to the Trails Committee and the trust about this, they'll be here tonight, but they have a Trails meeting themselves. So.
But that doesn't exist today, that's.
No, it doesn't. Right, right now, you have this, this parcel here, and so what we're doing is dividing it, this, and I will deed this to the old Conservation Trust, and then next year, we're gonna put preservation restrictions over a large part of this, so there can't be homes here. So, basically, we love Bolton the way it is, we love the open spaces, and my family would like, I feel embarrassed, but they, they think that would be great if our name is on the connector, so that's what we did. So that's the plan. Right now, I've got a prescription easement that I've given the, the trust, but that isn't permanent, so anybody who wants this home could revoke it, but this will do is make sure that whatever happens, it'll always belong to the trust, and the trust will always have a path, there's an existing path right here on the prescription license, so that there ought to be a way to get from, from Von Hill to Bowers Springs, which is ironically what Julie and I used to do with the kids in 1970, whatever, cross-country skiing before all this is conservation land.
Sure.
And that's represented by that light dash line? I was wondering what that was.
What, this thing?
Yeah.
Oh, at, early on, way back, when we first bought this parcel, I was thinking of doing a subdivision, we never recorded it.
Oh, all right.
So that's from an original, that was from Clag Wheeler's, no, that was from Clag Wheeler's 1982 plan, I think, whatever it was. So, I think it's a good thing to do, and we're happy to do it.
So tonight, you're just looking at carving out a parcel, are you there?
That's right. This 20, what is it, 27,000 square foot, it's 50 and a half, 50 speed wide, and it allows people to pass between the conservation areas.
And this is all conservation?
Yeah, this is, this is all Bowers Springs back here, so.
That's right.
There's like, I don't know, 100 acres over here, and there's a couple hundred acres over here, so it's nice. Rob and Scotty, when they started getting their land, which is over here, they gave a, a piece way out here. The existing trails are pretty much on the site, so we're hopeful that this will be useful.
Let's find, hey.
Yeah.
So.
And I hope the fellow who recused himself will be happy about this because the two, two fewer homes can't hurt my marriage.
Well, so, those two lots went up for sale, neighbors bought them to.
I, I heard that Keith bought.
Keith bought one, and then, and then Brutus is who live in the blue house down.
They moved.
He's gonna, he's gonna move to the Hells house. When he can finally sell his house.
Yeah.
But he bought the other lot.
Oh, good.
Bought one.
Has Scotty moved or not yet?
Yeah, I, yeah, she's out of there, nobody's there, well, there's somebody living over the garage, I think, we've been waiting to give him a case of beer or something, but they haven't moved yet.
Okay, I move that we prove the, in our plan, dated July 8th, 2017, for the barch connector.
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
So, how, how do I go about picking the, my other option?
Did you, we can sign it, right?
Yes, you do.
I dropped it off, I don't have, I dropped it at the county clerk's office when I.
Oh, it must be over here now.
I dropped that in two weeks.
You'll take it with you, we'll sign it.
Oh, actually, great, I appreciate that. It's a small world, like, one of you used to ride the bus to Emerson School with Leah and Vanessa.
I and my brother.
Yes.
Vanessa was in the, in class.
Yeah, I told them I was meeting with you tonight, and we had a chat.
And you guys were having your house built by?
The Androwskis.
Yes. At the same time as my parents' house.
Yeah, that's right, that's right. I think that's it.
So, is your, the 163 and Keith's house, because those were built in 78?
Keith's house was, was owned by the bishops ever there a couple years before we built. Yeah.
Your current house must have been 88, it was four.
The one we have now?
Yeah.
Yeah, 83.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
It's the contemporary look, you know, like turret, whatever you call it.
Yeah, the turret and all the, all the, the woman from the Historical Commission wouldn't take much of it, it's got too many angles.
You probably see us walk by, basically, I mean, I have a little boy and a girl, we walk by to the waterfall and back.
Yeah.
A million times.
Yeah. And we've had, we've had neighbors use that open space, some of the preservation restrictions on for sliding for years.
Oh, yeah.
And it's because I keep it low, and it's got just the right slope, so you're not gonna hurt yourself.
Will you sell the house, or are you sticking around for the time?
Oh, Julie may feel differently, but I want to stay here forever.
It's a cool, very unique house.
Yeah, I, I've done a lot of the work in it, so I feel like it's part of me. I got my fingers crossed, I'm giving a new grandson in September.
Oh, nice.
I hope, I've got four grandchildren, I hope one of them will move back.
Well, my parents left for about 10 years, went down the gate, thought that was absolutely perfect, and tomorrow, they close our house in Bolton, they're coming back.
Good to know, well, say hello.
They, they miss our tax rate.
Yeah.
I got an earful about that.
And apparently, they like something called pickleball.
Pickleball, yeah.
Yeah.
Everybody, everyone, friends and me are doing pickleball.
Oh, Craig Henry played pickleball.
Thank you.
Maybe they're.
She was like, does anybody play pickleball?
It's like ground ball, I guess, but more like squares and kind of.
All right, we're very late, I apologize. Joseph B. Kavaks. How do I say it?
Kobanks.
Okay. A name like Yaseway.
Yeah, exactly.
Come on up, please. So, 23 Harris Farm Road, notification intent to sell after 6100 property. I know where this is.
Yeah, so it's on Sugar, close to East End, there's a development of eight houses in the woods, you can only see one outside of the road. The last lot on one of the two common driveways, and my road frontage is actually Sugar Road, about three quarters of a mile away. So it's a weird shaped lot, it's a little Bolton lot, 9.31 acres. I've been in town 19 years, and have a small gentleman's farm, got divorced two years ago, and ceased farming, and unfortunately, now in process of selling the house.
Yeah.
Because of the divorce and thus, I'm here tonight.
Okay. How does this work, Eric? You gotta educate me a little, this is the first time, I think, I've.
He has to pay back taxes.
Well, yeah, but why, why is it before us?
Because if he, well, actually, when you take your land out of chapter, essentially, the town gets right of first refusal in terms of whether or not he wants, well, you want to sell it, so it's, whatever that, what your, the selling price is.
Yeah, I mean, I used to be the chairman of agriculture in town.
Yeah, go.
Years ago, so.
I may, I'm.
Clearly, you're explaining it, but one of the advantages of putting it in agricultural prevention, protection, is that you get a tax advantage in, and a lien on the property as such. In compensation to the town for that, they have first right of refusal, which is intent to give the town this decision of if it's an important piece of property for agriculture, do they want to preserve it, or do they want to pass that option to purchase to another board or, or organization within the town. The town of Bolton, the Selectman has set up the process so that the planning board and the Conservation Commission provides input for the Selectmen's vote on whether or not they want to. Okay. Purchase or town to proceed with that.
So we just provide comments to the board of Selectmen, basically?
Yeah, there's a memorandum that goes around that you need to identify whether yes or no, that the planning board is interested in the property. Okay, with that as a backdrop, for me, if this is an integral piece of land, kind of connecting two big conservation tracts, something like that, then there's a reason, it kind of makes sense. You've got the sergeant gift behind this, but that's it. It would have, it would effectively expand that a little bit.
Is this, is this?
I'm not inclined to exercise enough, but I'm interested. The only two things this might can add, the help is.
That's the sergeant gift, this.
That's the sergeant gift, yeah.
And that's just, well, so you know there's.
So the benefit.
Around here.
On butternut.
On butternut, but.
Where is that? 43? What is the butternut conservation?
It's actually kind of, it kind of wraps around.
Oh, okay.
And there's, there's some bigger areas in there, but it's.
Okay.
Yeah, it, yeah, it does abut conservation land, the road frontage on Sugar, the only challenge then becomes is the property is marsh and wet in that section.
Sure. In the section of Butting Sugar.
Yeah.
You can see.
Which is why this lot could never be subdivided into two parcels and have another house on there.
Okay.
So.
Does that sergeant gift get used? Probably by your neighbors?
It gets used because of the other connecting.
So it's a common driveway off the circle, is that how?
Yeah, correct. So, if, I mean, the, the house is actually located in this corner here, the common driveway runs from here and kind of snakes up in, in this direction. I have a barn that was added to the property then inside, and a small little paddock with the animals, where all this remains natural the way it's been all the years. And this area right here-
Is all the wet area, right?
Is, is a small.
We actually went through this with Moser, if you remember.
Yeah.
The cattle, the cattle that used to be there.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. And we, we decided not to.
Okay.
So, I mean, I think I'm fine with saying we're not interested.
And the purchase price is seven hundred and forty-seven thousand, is that correct?
Because it's the house as well. One lot, it hasn't required the house.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I don't think the town's interested in that.
You've got somebody tied up or you're just starting marketing?
No, you've got a- No, I have to come here with a P and S.
Oh, got it, got it, got it.
So actually it's-
Would you switch the?
No, it's okay.
Okay.
We were actually going to close at the end of June and it's been delayed because of this, so.
Okay, okay. Yeah, so.
And the letter from board of selectmen is in your packet. So essentially I either check not interested or a letter to follow.
Yeah.
What would be the benefits of?
If the town wants to buy it and?
No, I mean, of, of the town, of town versus?
In this particular case, nothing. If you, if you, if you go back to the, to the previous hearing, if that was chapter land and we saw it connect, you know, sitting between two
That's my idea.
Pieces of conservation.
Or a hundred acre.
Or, or.
Right.
Yeah, so it was, yeah, so it was.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Makes sense.
This is a running conservation, but it's a small piece of, I think-
Landlocked conservation.
Yeah.
Kind of landlocked conservation and, and the one piece that's access is all-
Correct.
All so much, is all swampy, so.
And that is true. There's a lot of water around there, there's a, there's a-
It's a driveway when it comes in like that, basically?
Yeah, it's a common driveway shared with five houses, the last one.
Okay, well, I, I will move that we inform the board of selectmen that we have no interest in exercising our rights on this parcel.
Step one. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And South Bolton Road.
Yes.
Come on up, please.
Okay, just if you were interested, we would still, the town would still buy it at that price.
Yeah, this is just gateway, this is step one.
Okay.
I don't know, they'd have to raise and appropriate the money too. That would take a while, right?
You don't think there's a huge advantage?
No, no.
Come on, why not? Well, again, it depends, I mean, if it was, if you could make it a conservation, I think conservation-
Right, no, I get it.
No, it would be very, it'd be pretty straightforward to, you know. If the conservation trust was interested in it, we-
Right, they might have the money to-
Well, they, they act on meeting to approve it.
Right, right.
So, in this case, there's nothing, no.
So, good evening. I have, I think it's pretty simple, but I don't know. First of all, my name's Jim Moran. I'm the owner of Northeast Classic Engineering. We kind of design and build things, mainly safety systems and other infrastructure. I currently live in Belmont, Mass. and I got my home under agreement. And I grew up in Clinton, I caddied at the International and I, Bolton's always been near and dear to me. So I have an option on Lot Zero. The reason why, I was just gonna turn it this way, because it's the way you would come in. This is known as the Bonzoli property, it's in the trust right now. When I looked at it, it had some pending information on it. This was a storage facility for Bonzoli pumping well.
Where's his house?
The little house is this little lot right here. It's a little white house, it's a cave. So what my intentions are here is to probably build a house for myself, but to, in order to keep costs down, I was trying to get two lots out of, when I looked at the parcel, when I, when I got on agreement, they told me it was five acres. I was pretty excited, I'm like, so I, I work with Jim Harris, who's a P E. So we work together on a lot of different projects. This will be one of them. So when we did a survey and all that, we found out that this, this, the assessor has this two hundred and seventy-three feet of frontage, it's not, it's like two thirty-eight. It ends up being four point three acres. So, a little different than when I originally started. So I'm trying to make a go of it, I do have it under agreement with the trust. And when we, when Jim and I went through the regulations, we say, okay, you know, if we put a road in, we could get two lots and then we ran into-
Can you show me where, I'm confused by the drawing. Can you show me where the current roads are and stuff in that chart?
Okay, are you familiar with the Bonzoli house at all? The white one, it has a mailbox on it.
There's a South Bolton meet-
Right here, there's South Bolton Road.
So, Bo meets Wheeler. Okay, and Wheeler's the dead end, so you're-
Yeah.
And you're heading to Bennetton's.
Yep, yep.
So you're coming down the hill and there's a nice, like a gray cave on the right.
So where's Wheeler, so this is, where's Wheeler?
This is Wheeler. This is Hudson. This is Bennetton's.
Yeah.
Okay.
This is the property, it's the odd shaped thing.
It's a nice cave here.
Yeah, it's a big cave.
This is Mr. Bonzoli's house, a little white house here. Right around here, it kind of takes a dip in the road when it rains a lot.
Oh, yeah.
And that's one of the things I was gonna talk to you guys about.
Yeah.
I'd like to be able to fix that.
For sale sign? It's a little bit cleared and there's, there's an old dirt road.
So this is where that's-
Back pretty far.
Wheeler, this is, I've been down Wheeler, this is where that, like, that red house is or something that you can see from the highway, the red.
There'll be these.
Oh, that's these.
There's a few of them, yes. Okay, they're right on the road.
Okay, all right, I know where I am. Sorry about that. So when we, like I said, what was disclosed to me when I tied it up is there was some contamination on the property. And that would be, there was a bunch of aero ties in there, there was asbestos pipe, there were supplies from the Bonzoli construction family. It's owned by the trust right now. So my goals would be to do is to clean it up, get a clean bill of health on the land, help out the neighborhood, I'd like to fix that drainage. We looked at it, Jim and I looked at it. I think we can put a receiving base on one side, go to an existing wetland over there, obviously file notice of intent to all that engineering, that kind of thing. But that, that way DPW wouldn't have to go down there and put a cone down the road anymore and it was really flooded and it's actually killed some beautiful trees already. You're getting a bunch of erosion on the bank from the people driving through the potter and splashing it up. So my goal would be to fix all that. We, Jim and I, we, what we have laid out here is a five hundred foot cul-de-sac in order to get the two lots. Where we're a little bit shy is on the perimeter. This lot here is point four one, if you read the perimeter regs.
Lot shape.
It's the lot shape.
That's the issue.
Yeah. The, the back one is fine, it's-
So what would it be? It'd be a backland lot creation?
No, no, it'd be, I'm proposing to cut a five hundred foot road in, just for two lots.
Okay.
And just to give it enough space, I am proposing, you know, just two small three thousand square foot homes with two garages.
It'd be a shared drive, a common drive or a road?
I don't know, that's, we, we originally would-
We looked at the regs, excuse me, my name is Jim Harris. We looked at the regs and your regs say that I can, you can only have a common drive for three to four, more than three units.
But you could have a shared drive over two units.
If, if you had the frontage.
If you have a frontage.
And that's the problem we're running into.
Because we only have two hundred and thirty-eight feet of frontage.
So you don't, yeah, you don't have it, okay.
Okay, so, and you require two hundred feet of frontage. And so there's where you run into the problems.
So if you-
So you can't, you can't have a backland lot on a shared?
The backland lot has to be four and a half acres.
The total acreage is four point five.
How much are you?
We are four point three eight.
Total, that's-
Total. So the only way to make it work, or, the concept we came up with is to put a five hundred foot cul-de-sac in there and have two lots. But then you run into the problem with your shape, lot shape factor, where it has to be greater than point five. For the back lot, I got point six, well, we have point six one. The one in front, we have point four one.
What, what's the?
Sorry, I was just gonna say the point six one, that's what with versus like?
No, that's the, you have this calculation you do.
To square it off.
It's written, it's written-
It's designed to square the lots off.
Yeah, squaring factor, some people call it.
You have to do an older road.
Sure, sure.
What's the width of the right away you just showed?
Forty feet.
You said, you did assume forty.
Forty feet, twenty-four foot wide. I'm just as, I, you know, I'm just, I'm not asking anything, I'm just trying to-
Yeah, we want to get by the perimeter.
Work within the rules and what I've come, what we have come up with is we can make the eighty thousand square foot, eighty thousand square foot requirement. We can do all the side and front and back setbacks. The stumbling block comes to do, well, some people call it the squaring factor, you call it the lot shape regulation. And it comes down to is I have to, we have to be greater than point five. The one in the back, the back one is point six one, the one in the front is point four one, which is about eighty-two percent of what you want.
Right, right. And to the right of that, that's fifteen on the assessor's report.
That's the, that's the Bonzoli house.
Yeah.
And that's, that's twelve thousand square feet.
That's a small little lot.
Real small lot. And we looked at it.
So what about the next, the next one?
This is the beautiful cave, that's a beautiful cave, it's a brown, it's a beautiful cave.
We looked at trying to put in a road in here, but then it gets too messy, okay? And the road, if, I don't know if you, you probably know this area better than I do. I mean, this lot is small. That road would be like, they'd be the-
It'd be right on top.
It'd be right next to the garage.
So we said, if we move it over here, you got some buffer, you got better side distances out here on South Bolton Road and then we can just bring this in and this is five hundred feet.
Hey, it's, it's, it's curious, it's interesting. You could solve a couple of problems, but contamination also for me is, is the road.
Right.
Man, I would want input. And maybe you could sell it to them, maybe not. I would want input from that neighbor.
On the one on the left, he's got a huge buffer. His house sits a hundred and fifty feet this way.
But he's got a non-conforming full blown road coming in right next to him. I want to hear what he-
Well, the, the road would be conforming.
It's the lot, the road.
No, the road's conforming.
I, I understand. But then it makes your impact to the neighborhood. He's the one getting impacted. He might like it, he might, he might be solving his drainage problem, which he is with.
Right, not only that, is it, you know, a cul-de-sac with just two homes here at that price would really help-
Well, that's the road.
Him value wise too.
It could.
Yeah, I mean, when you bring in that kind of, you know, it's not very crowded, they're small houses, you know?
Oh, no, he's Mr. Phil.
Jacket first and so on.
I don't know if I'm sold. I think it's an interesting idea. I think we should explore it with the neighbor. I don't know what best forum that is, whether it's you-
No, we, we should get support. I can knock on his door and ask him a few questions and see if he'll talk to me. I can show him this, this plan.
How, how big are the two lots?
They're over two acres. They're forty, they're eighty thousand square, over eight thousand.
One's eighty-two thousand square feet, another one's eighty-three thousand square feet.
So that common drive, you're calling, will you call it a public road or?
No, it'll be a road.
It will be a road.
Yeah. That's right along the lot line, this lot line, right?
Yes.
It's right, yeah.
Yeah, it's like his house.
His house, see, see, the, the other, the other thing is, is if, when researching this thing, I went back to nineteen fifty, okay? And the road was, the alignment of the nineteen fifty road on South Bolton Road is different than what it is today, okay? Because as that neighbor, the next door neighbor has that nice house, the road was more of a-
It did a hairpin turn.
It did a hairpin, you can see, if you look at the old deeds, and I don't have it here, but it was a hairpin turn. Now that road has moved out a little bit and it's been more of a gradual thing. So he's got a pretty good buffer from the road as well as there's a lot of, between his house and the property line of this property that we're talking about. It's a good buffer in that area.
So, looking at this, the road is coming in on this side, right?
Yeah.
So it's coming in up to here roughly and then having the cul-de-sac here. So you're affecting the, I mean, potentially, you know, all three of these.
Forty, forty-one, forty-two.
Yes, exactly.
They're on a different road, yeah.
I know they're on a different road, but you are-
Eventually, there's a really big sized buffer here though.
There's a pond back there too.
And, and this particular lot here-
Still putting in a public road along the land which wasn't there, would that require some type of hearing or something or not?
Well, it would, you know, it's a planned area.
We're gonna go for definitive subdivision, like, you know.
Yeah, we're just trying to-
We're just seeing if you, if the void would entertain-
Even entertain the sub.
Yeah.
Yeah, before we get the surveyors out there and everybody out there, just to get some feeling from you guys.
Can I walk it?
Yeah.
You can do anything you want.
I'd love to check it out and kind of get a feel.
Yeah, it is, it's a-
Where is the?
There's a road right in here, that's where the old gate is for the storage of the construction supplies.
Sure, sure.
And if you go in here, it has a nice little cul-de-sac feel now. There's an island, a tree island and I think it was Bonzoli way back beginning, he took a dose or something, just pushed dirt. It made, it, it's, it's kind of messy in there. My goal is to get rid of all the slash. There's tons of slash going in, the, you know.
There's some trash there.
I want to clean the property, so I, I'm dying to see what that neighbor says.
Have you done soil testing in there?
Uh, I'm a soil scientist, I know it's sand and gravel. I can-
But we're talking about the contaminants.
You're talking about hazards.
No, that's a twenty-one E site assessment. I'm working on that, but I don't want to spend that money yet. I got some documents that were given to me by, Bonzoli paid like, I think in excess of thirty-two thousand dollars to remove some contaminants there. Most of the contaminants were aero ties, asbestos pipe. But the site still needs to be cleaned up, that's my goal. I want to get the slash piles down, I want to clean it up, I want to beautify it. But in order to do so, I, and when I, it's not worth it, I might as well go somewhere else.
Yeah.
And we can waive, we can waive the shade rate.
You can waive the lot shape.
Yeah, it, it's-
But then because of your plan would do a definitive subdivision, we'd have a hearing, it'd be that process.
No, I totally get it.
You know, we just, just to get some feel from you, because-
I'm not, I, I would say it would be, to me, dependent on the neighbors, so I'm not against it really.
So, I want to, so, just two, two questions. I'm not, I haven't looked at the, at the site, the regularity. If you, if you take the, the, you know, the lot under there between the two.
The front, yes.
If you brought that down a little bit.
Down this way or?
No, it's kind of tipped it.
Tipped it this way?
Flatter, so it's coming more, you know, so instead of, instead of being, you know, like that, just brought, brought the, you know, brought it down.
Hey, you could, let me see, you can write on this, this is just a work and drawing. What do you think?
Kind of, you know, just a little, a little more horizontal than it is.
So up this way?
No, no.
No, the other way.
Oh, this way, oh, hard on.
Okay, then, then I, okay, then I'm, okay.
Does that help the regularity?
See, the break, okay.
So like I said, I haven't looked at that piece of wire, so.
I, I played with this a lot, okay. I need eighty thousand square feet.
Yeah, which is why I asked for the square feet.
And if I cut this, I drop below eighty thousand feet. I had, I started this lot, when I put the road in here, I started it like that, okay? I kept moving it until I could get eighty thousand, okay? And then that made this one look funky, so then I sort of, I wanted to square this one up, to make this one, okay? And still try to get the forty, you know, as close to the point five as I want. And that's basic, I could probably tweak it a little bit more, but for what we were doing and didn't want to spend a lot of time and his, all of his money, you know, fooling around with it. We just wanted to see how you guys feel and then, you know, we can then get, get some.
Can you, you can't waive the lot size, right?
Not the lot size, that's what. That's a good question. I, I can find out.
And if he has the lot size, it's just-
It's not a waiver, it'd be a variance.
Yeah, and this is simply a waiver which is, it specifies, if you look at that section on the reg, it's saying, come before us, we have the right to waive that. And Erica brought it to my attention, that's why, I'm like, all right, I'll, I'll try that, you know?
Can you explain to me, like, you know, just, so this is the road. So why do you have a line?
Has the building envelope.
Building envelope, I have to be fifty feet off of this.
I wanted to show that I could get two houses in there and not have any setback requirement, you know? Not exactly my issues. I have that one issue and I want to move forward. Eight, right?
Oh, so, so this is, this is the fifty foot frontage?
Yes, I can't have fifty feet out here because I'm two feet short.
Yeah.
Okay? And if I go by the rules, it's two thirty-eight minus forty. And I guess I could have, we could ask for that to be reduced. I don't know, right of ways, I don't think, I don't think you can go any lower than forty feet.
No, I think we actually require fifty, but you can go down at forty, is that?
This would be just a lane though, there's only two houses on it.
You're talking about the frontage variance, the frontage rate.
No, well, see, they all tie together.
Yeah.
I, I, we proposed a forty foot right of way in here, okay? And with a twenty-four foot paved road, okay?
Yeah, right, the one, we saw that.
Oh, yeah, we could, yeah, yeah.
But we'll just show worst case to everyone.
But that doesn't help me because this is two thirty-eight. Two thirty-eight minus forty puts you one ninety-eight and I need two hundred foot of frontage in the front, so.
Sure, sure you don't want to get a second opinion?
Well, this is, okay, this is, this is a point, this is based on the research that I did and with Erica's help, which has spent us a couple days.
If you look at the nineteen, I think it's fifty-two D for the Bonzoli, it ties out perfectly. Where it gets messed up is when the assessor gets a hold of it, they were looking at something, they're showing two hundred and seventy-three feet. Jim and I guessed, two seventy-one, Jim and I guessed when they played with the road. And I don't know if they sent notices out to people, I don't know what the regs were, we're thinking-
So you're saying there's a bigger bend?
Yeah, we watched way out.
Yeah. So, we, it might, you know, if, when we hire the, the land surveyor to come out and to do their little bit thing, I'm not a land surveyor, I'm just an engineer. So I can put things together, but I'm not one hundred percent. So obviously we'd have a land surveyor go out, do a boundary survey and then verify what we have. But based on the records that we could come up with, and you, you know, we, she, Erica was very helpful, we came with two thirty-eight and that's why I have one ninety-eight in front and that's why the frontage is on the front.
So the road during the forty foot, that's including the forty foot buffer, so it's not overlapping into the-
Right, right.
No, it's right.
Yeah, the pavement would be narrower.
And there isn't a required variance from that?
What, the road right of way?
To, to the land, yeah, to the, to the forty, forty-one and forty-two, there's no variance from?
Oh, you mean, is there a setback between the, I don't think so.
I think so, yeah.
No, because it's a right of way, so you can put it wherever.
Okay. Okay, can I go back, so I didn't quite catch the, the drainage issue, what you, uh-
There's a right.
There's a local.
There's a pond.
There's a pond drainage.
There's right here, there's...
Here's the Bonzoli land, right in here.
Right in here. There's a big pond.
Yeah.
And I'm assuming there was a drainage kind of ditch, and there was a basin there years ago, might have been one of those concrete top ones, and maybe the DBW didn't maintain it, got clogged, and just fell in and collapsed.
That's the one everybody complains about, right?
Yeah.
It must not, it just one down.
Yeah.
Well, this one, this is, this one, yeah, when I went there in the springtime, the DBW had the cones out there, and they had, and people are driving through a splash, and it's killed some trays, it's made some damage, you know?
No, I mean, how are...
So, so, yes, where do you, somebody even kind of fix it?
Well, I put the proper basin in, you know, file notice from the tent, and have the, the water right now, when it ponds, it pours over the road, so I'd have to do the engineering on that to be able to get it to discharge into the wetland.
I think, I think it discharges across, I think...
Yeah, there's huge wetlands across the street.
There's huge wetland across the street, and I think, well, it's never been dry enough, but I've been, I have a, you know, metal probe, and I've been poking around, I think the structure is well off the road, okay? And, because it does decrease in volume, the water does go down, and I think it discharges across the street into the wetlands, because I've looked at some plans, and it seems to indicate that. Again, I don't know this for a fact, we'd have to go in there and do some exploratory...
And we would have to file a notice from town of conservation to do that.
But actually put a structure there.
But also doing any work within the public right of way.
Yeah, yeah, we'd have to tie, we'd have to tie the work into the DBW, we'd have to get their support, what they want to see.
Yeah, my only concern is that it's a bigger problem than just fixing that, because I think you need to look at the entire watershed, that's my only concern, because there's a lot issue.
This is pretty isolated, that next issue is almost a quarter mile up the road.
But that whole wetland system, that's all connected, and what's happening on Spatula Little Road is directly related to that, so I just know there's a lot of issues, so the town is looking at doing an engineering study in that area, I don't know what the priority for that is, I think it's been bumped up.
We talked about the capital planning.
So that's my link of concern, is that I don't want, yeah.
Well, I mean, we could meet with them and maybe work in conjunction with them about trying to do some of the repair. Obviously, it's going to be a problem, it's, you know, if you build a home there, you don't want a lake in front of, you know, driving out, it must ice over in the wintertime, it causes problems and...
It's killing the trees, though, the splashes.
Yeah, so roading away some of the roots on a big tree.
So, I mean, this is your business, but have you done the math out for transferring the road, and, you know, hand weight, Fred would have to be reviewing since it's a public road, I mean, have you included that all into here?
Yeah, yeah.
It's a lot of extra work.
I have a construction company, I would be doing the work myself, I own excavators, and I build homes, and...
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
It's just a lot of, uh...
It's a lot of cost, that's what I'm saying, is if, if you guys said to me, you know, we don't like that idea, I would, I would break my agreement tomorrow with the Bonzoli Trust, because for me to go in there and do all that work for one law...
Well, that makes no sense, okay.
Yeah, it's just the money doesn't work, I mean...
Well, you could, but if, you know, theoretically, one house, but you're talking to McMansion, you gotta make it profitable, if you're gonna put a house, a house on four point three acres, it's gonna be a big house.
When I, again, when I...
You know, and does that fit into the...
What originally brought me here to this lot was it was advertised as five acres, and when you look at the state zoning, and I brought this to Erica's attention, a gentleman's farm at five acres, so I could have livestock if I wanted, I could have equipment, that type of thing.
Yeah.
And then, when Jim and I went around, collected all the deeds, we collected all the deeds that surround this, put all the lines in, came up with four point three acres, I said, either I try to rethink it, or I cancel that and go somewhere else. I was very interested in it as a five acre gentleman's farm, to be honest with you, cleaned it all up, and if somebody, you know, it set up nice for a paddock here on that existing way, you know, it'd sit up high, you'd go by it, there's a small little pond off the property, you know, it appears to be spring fed, so I said, ooh, that would set up real nice, I cleaned it up, and tried to do that.
I mean, that may still be a possibility, I thought it was a two acre.
It's a five acre, on the state, on the state regulations.
I thought they had reduced it, did you?
Oh, I don't know that, it's...
Let's talk to Mike Savage about that, because I don't want to just take that off the table, if that's something you really want to do, because I, I did it gotten reduced.
Okay.
The right, just in terms of rights of farming, and then the state zoning act related to our agriculture, I think you could farm that, you know, at four point eight.
Right, but I would want to do it unrestricted, and that's what...
Maybe that's, maybe that's the difference, I don't know.
What you don't want to get into is a special circumstance, if you invest a lot of money, if you make state zoning, no disrespect to this board, you've got state approval to have livestock, and to do, you know, the neighbor calls, and somebody would come down, they'd say, I chose them out, and, you know, you get a lot of exemptions, and you can do what you want, it has value, is what I'm trying to say.
I would want to verify that.
It would, it would never get down to two acres, because then everybody would be flying those things around everywhere, I mean, every lot in Bolton would be exempt.
All the new ones, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
From my perspective, I mean, we've waived shape in the past.
Yeah, but it's a bigger picture, it's not just shape, it's putting in a road.
I think that's, that's...
Well, so what I was gonna say is, I'm not as concerned about the shape, I'm more concerned about the neighbors.
Yeah, and I appreciate that comment, I'll go and talk to them, you know?
I mean, I have a little bit of a concern about, you know, I mean, if that becomes a town road.
Well, that's a big problem now.
Well, you know, then we're encumbering, you know, maintenance on that, and...
Well, that's one of the things that passed through Fred, of course. But one of the things I...
Yeah, no, I mean, it means plowing it, it means...
It's a cost.
Yeah, true. And that's one of the things I talked to Erica about, is, you know, if I get it all approved this way, and if the town said to me they would prefer a common drive, obviously it would be to my benefit, but a lot of times when you go through this, and you ask for those types of things, you're gonna prove it to everybody what you're actually doing. If the town said to me, hey, make that a common drive, because we don't want to maintain it, well, it's not into our best interest to have that...
Did they let, not allow us to make it a common drive?
Is there any way to design this as a common?
Or can be run as a private road?
I was just gonna, that's what I was gonna say, maybe you can do that.
Private road, yeah.
So, wait, with it being done as a private road, can you reduce any of the requirements?
I don't, I don't know, we don't have, look into it.
So, a private road is pretty much considered, regulation wise, a regular road, except they're responsible for it, except you can't come to town meeting for it.
Right, I think the idea, the agreement would be that they wouldn't come to town meeting for, you know...
Right, approving, yeah, it's a private road, we agreed to maintain it.
Basically, you'd go through the process up till that point, and then he would just maintain it.
I mean, that would, for two lots, that would be to our benefit, and I wouldn't want to have the town have to go out and plow it.
Because there's a, there's a common driveway by law, so we have to have, instead of fire trucks and everything get up, for shared driveway, we don't have that, right, and it's just like, it has to follow the private driveway.
It's minimal, yeah.
Yeah, but even a common driveway, or a shared driveway, in certain towns, doesn't it have to be reviewed by the fire department?
Fire department's part of it, yeah.
Yeah, they do.
You do turnouts and stuff like that.
I mean, Bolton has a lot of those.
And we still want the fire department to weigh in on this, I'm just thinking, I mean, if we could reduce the road portion of it, I think that seems to be the only real contender here, and the concern of, you've got three butters...
Right.
That are gonna be immediately...
That's my major concern.
Right, adjacent to it, so, I guess, to your point of the lot shape, I don't have an issue necessarily moving forward.
Right, it's not necessarily the lot shape.
And that's all, really, truly, that's all I'm here for tonight, is to get some nods in, pull for the yes direction, that, yeah, we, it is in our ability to do so, there's nothing there regarding the perimeter thing that upsets the board, and I've gotten some great feedback, I don't believe, I couldn't think of this before, I should have talked to the neighbors, so I will, that will be on my next, I mean, obviously, the Bonzoli is, the trust wants to sell it, they're here, this guy, this person I should really talk to, because his house is neat as a pin, and he really wants to know what's going on, I would think.
And you're just gonna also, sorry, have to, I mean, if this is a town road, you've gotta have stormwater mitigation?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean...
So, I was saying, does it make sense for two houses?
Well, I guess, I don't know, is a private road, is it held to the same standards?
I think, no, it's a lot, it would be a lot less.
Yeah.
So, so, I guess...
I mean, I mean, the stormwater needs to be maintained on...
If the regulations on private road are...
As stringent as a common driveway, why wouldn't people always just do private roads versus common driveway?
But I, I think it's still, it's still a road.
It's still a road.
Especially with tiles and regs, they weren't necessarily waived certain requirements if they wanted to.
But it's just no...
It's just, he never goes through the town, you know, through town.
He doesn't pay the transfer costs, and why not maintain it?
Right.
But would Fred, would Fred be reviewing it still?
Yeah, I mean, the fire department would want to see it.
So, the only difference between private and public is it's just not transferred?
Right.
And some of the standards are reduced, like you wish usually, you know, some, you wouldn't build a cul-de-sac, but you might put a turnout, say.
Well, that's what I was thinking, is if you could reduce the cul-de-sac...
Oh, yeah.
That would help out a lot.
Yeah.
Now, is, it's just a question, you have regulations for common driveways, and it's for three or more...
Yep.
Three to five.
Three to five, okay. Is there any way of having a common drive for two lots?
Well, that's what we were asking.
Then, would you have to go for a variance, and would that be it, and if you were to go for a variance, what's the likelihood, has it ever been proposed and approved in the past?
I've never seen it, no.
Okay, so it's, I'm just, I'm just looking at different, you know...
Erica, could you...
Typically, you wouldn't want that.
If I went with a private road, because I can obviously include the frontage, how does that work?
What do you mean, include the frontage?
So, on a common drive, if you run a common drive through the land, you can't really, you need the frontage on the main road.
Well, that's a good question.
So, if I, if I say, okay, I'm gonna try to go a private road with the planning board support, I need to include that frontage to get that lot, that's the whole idea of the road.
That's a good question, I don't know the answer, and I think, I think we need to, we need to research this, I don't, I mean...
Yeah, I'm willing to go forward some more of what I saw tonight regarding the perimeter.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have a hard egg with regard to the lot shape.
And speaking of butters, it's three hundred feet all around, so I would work your way around everybody, because they're all gonna have input at the hearing.
Yeah, I'm not feeling it, but it sounds like the rest of the board is positive, I will not stand in the way.
Okay.
I probably get your...
I think, there's a lot of open questions out here.
What is, what is your concern?
It's a road where there's no reason to be a road.
Well, so, okay, so what would you rather see if you had...
One house.
One house.
That's what, that's what that lot's meant for.
Well, so, what I was saying is, I'm okay with the shape waiver.
That's what I'm saying.
Right.
I'm taking big picture.
Big picture, I think, big picture, big picture, I think I'm in the same place as you, but not because of the shape, because of the road.
Right, the shape, I don't care.
I would be fine if it could work out if it was a shared driveway with two houses.
Yeah.
I think that would be...
Great, but it's the front, yeah.
I mean, I know it doesn't, it doesn't work out that way, but now you have, you know, now you're something more susceptible to what I think the butters would be for, so I, I don't know, I mean, I would definitely want to hear some feedback.
I think, I would support, you know, going to the private road to get around the frontage requirements. But you know what, I would say, if you're willing to spend the time, prove me wrong and show me that...
Well, he doesn't want to spend the time.
All of those, just do it.
No, I can do the neighbors, that's my, that's a little bit of my time.
There's a lot of butters.
I would love to see...
I suspect you'll have some issues, maybe I'm wrong, maybe I'm wrong.
I mean, they've been looking at an eyesore for many years.
That is true.
And the White House is an eyesore, they got contamination, they got wells, they got, and you got somebody willing to come and clean all that up?
So, if they're, if they're fine with putting a road there and getting rid of all that, then?
Yeah, I need, I need a butter support, and I know that.
I think that's my main concern.
Because you really are surrounded, it's not just that house.
Right. The Bonzoli... The butters are huge, though.
No, I understand.
The butters are huge, and...
Let's just go. But you, have you developed this down before?
Uh, no, but I, I did in Belmont, I mean, I've done it, I mean, we measured, I did it in Andover, we measured to hundreds of inches, down on multimillion dollar properties that people can't...
They have the roof.
What's the scale on that, what's this frontage?
People will get...
Two seventy-one.
Two, no, the frontage on, on South Fulton Road?
Yeah.
Two thirty-eight.
So, you probably need... This is probably all the, everybody inside that circle is probably...
Yeah, yeah, I could run the, yeah.
Which is probably ten people, so...
Yeah.
You probably need, you know...
To make it two, no, see, you need, you need about four hundred frontage to...
Yeah.
To a conventional, yeah, okay.
Just the butter here in particular, she will have a lot of input, so I would definitely reach out to her, her name's Margaret Campbell, she lives at the corner here, definitely reach out to her.
I think she's a...
She has a lot of concerns about that lot.
That's the water issue.
Yeah. She calls me quite often about it, so...
Yeah. There's a lot of water issues in my town, I'll tell you.
Yeah. So that's definitely exploring the agricultural exemption with Mike, I think that's definitely worth looking at again.
Yeah, because...
If that's what you're doing, if that's really what you'd like to have.
Well, I think it has the most, it had the most potential in the beginning, because of this riding area over here, there's a lot of potential buyers, you know, if you can tell them, you know, don't board a horse at twelve hundred dollars a month, come over here, buy this nice place, build them a riding rink.
Well, we can do it. If you make it a farm, then it would be one house?
Twelve hundred dollars, it would be two.
Oh, at least.
Really?
You didn't know that?
Oh, yeah, no idea.
Yeah, yeah.
What's that, twelve hundred?
So, board a horse.
Oh, yeah.
And that's, you're probably cleaning your own stall at that.
Oh, yeah.
It's probably more like fifteen hundred a month, and then you're feeding it, and then if they're feeding it, it's probably up to twenty-one hundred a month. I used to be a barn inspector, I used to be a public health director.
I was paying on a pretty decent form rate.
Yeah. People love their pets, though.
Oh, I get it.
But that's why I was originally looking at that, because of the riding area.
I think in general, everybody would be happier with giving you that.
I think, yeah.
Giving you the farm exception.
Maybe a one lot.
One lot, the farm exception.
Yeah, but again, the farm, if it doesn't meet the state regs, whatever that is, I'll take another little bit of that, then it's, and it's, it's not quite full soul, but it's pretty close.
Yeah, right.
Because anybody who's gonna come in, you know, if they want to run, say they want to do a compost site, you know, that's gonna affect the neighbors.
Yeah.
You know, if they have the five acres, you can do the compost site.
Sure.
Or anything like that, the compost site comes to mind.
The neighbors will still complain about that.
I, I know, but, no, but you have your, you have your ticket, you know?
You know, as long as it's not pigs in this town, we're okay.
Yeah.
I would pull the neighbors, I think that should be...
Yeah, all right.
That, yeah, and check and see if the...
Yeah, we'll look at the regs again.
And I'll look at the issue of the private road, and how does that affect it, because I should do that prior to talking to the neighbors, so I could be honest with them and say, hey, I'm looking to do this, we can prove we can get a conventional road, but we'd like to do a, we'd like to have your support to do this, clean the land up, and we need, we're gonna go before a private road if it's a variance or whatever.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay, thank you very much, good luck.
Thank you.
Nice meeting you all.
Good to meet you. So, you use a lot of open grade restriction courses?
I have.
I used to work for DOT, and they saved all the highways with it.
Oh, okay, well, I mean, I've used the whole permeable, so with, not just the...
We use it on the top, a lot.
Yes, yeah, I've seen that.
Cuts down and spray.
And splashing, yeah.
Spray, yeah.
The thing with that is, though, if you don't use the whole base, it, you know, it deteriorates quicker than normal.
Yeah, but they, you know...
It's getting better.
It is, it is, because some of the stuff that we've done, ten years ago, and then we've, when we were doing more, it was getting better performance.
We did a lot of work on that stuff.
Where for, you worked on the...
Green International Phillies in West Coast.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, these two offices down from me.
Okay.
Oh, okay. Yeah, yeah.
New road, or new estate road?
Yeah, it's under construction now. Yeah.
No, this was another one.
Oh, okay, they have another one.
Oh, yeah.
So, since you're here, I'll take the comments that you guys made in the last meeting, and I think it's...
Is this executive session?
No, we're talking about, yeah, draft cottage overlay district by law discussion, we've got a working article that we've been talking about the last few meetings, making some edits, and now, today, discussing the edits that we made between last meeting and this meeting.
So, the board talked about taking out the age restriction, so I went ahead and did that.
We're still not sold on that, but...
Okay, and now I'm calling it cottage overlay district, I don't know if that's the name we'll go with, but we can think about that.
Why are you not sold on that?
Well, I think I need to do a little more research on what a cottage is, I want to make sure that it takes that.
I'm just not sure the twenty-four hundred square foot cottage is...
Yeah, like that's...
Not sure the twenty-four hundred, I mean...
There may be a better word, whatever, I'll present this by law.
For the cottage side, you're gonna make a lot of shrink in the...
Yeah, so we can think about that a little bit.
So, we addressed the diversity in housing in this case, but, you know, you're still adding some kids, I mean, you don't completely change the math, you definitely changed the course of the river a little bit, but you're not damming it.
It is a, it's a tough topic, because you want a land...
You want it to be happen, huge, yeah.
So you want it to be flexible, Mr. Story pressed that strong, and I don't disagree with him, and when you limit it to age, then you limit your population, we saw it with these guys, they were not interested in it.
Yeah, I think if we open it up, we definitely have to say max two bedrooms, I don't know.
Well, that's exactly where I was going with that, there's other ways to do it.
Ten percent, like, we were gonna say ten percent.
Yeah. That's in there. Yeah, I'm not sure the twenty-four hundred square feet is, I mean... Those are the things we gotta massage. I mean, that's, that's a pretty big cottage. So dwelling units can be attached or detached, units, combination of these types, dwelling units shall be, where am I? Include one, two, or three bedrooms, three bedroom units shall be limited to ten percent of the total number.
Were there any other, so you just took that out, with all dwelling units limited to twenty four hundred square feet. So the things on the front page are just name changes?
Uh, essentially, yeah.
Okay.
And, yeah, and he got the age restriction.
Getting rid of age restriction.
Yeah.
And because of that change, even the base density is.
So where am I?
I, I, okay, so right now we're in.
We're under section three.
Three A.
Okay. And I think you need everything we've got in three A, but if we want to tighten that further as a way of getting comfortable with not having an age restriction, I think that's where we could make some tweaks. Is it ten percent? Do we let any three bedroom unit?
I would say twenty four hundred square feet.
Why do we want any three bedroom?
I think you could need to allow, to allow some diversity in that.
I, I, yeah, I, I think, I think, you know, certainly eighteen hundred square feet, I would, you know, gut feeling would be more of a cottage.
But again, this is as to a maximum, this is just a maximum.
Right, it's a maximum, but, but.
It will be huge.
You also guaranteed that, yeah, I read.
Yeah, it will be huge.
Yeah, it, it will.
Maybe we should change it to like two thousand.
Well, I said eighteen hundred. I said eighteen hundred.
Well, I'm just thinking.
I'm just thinking, the house I grew up with was eighteen hundred square feet, and it was not a cottage.
Well.
You know, and it was three hundred.
So I had a, I have a townhouse in.
Four people?
I have a townhouse in Clinton that's seventeen forty.
Yeah, see, yeah.
Yeah, my town is a little over eighteen hundred, and it's, it's not small, it really isn't.
No, it, it's.
So I was, I mean, I would say two thousand for a little bit of.
I, I would not go below two thousand, if I think, I.
If it's too small, then we'll go two thousand.
We wouldn't go below it.
I would not.
Two thousand, sold.
I, I would actually still like it to be higher than that, but.
Well, again, you know, this is, I mean.
It's a draft.
Why? Because you don't think it'll get used as much?
Well, I, I think we, I'm always going back to what Doug Story said, in means like you need to give us flexibility, and I think giving them more flexibility, you know, I'm a little hesitant to pigeonhole stuff too much.
No, I totally agree with that, I don't know what the right number is, but.
I thought he had thrown out that twenty four hundred.
No, I think that, that was what one of the other.
Developers mentioned.
Other developers had, or some other town might have that number.
Oh, I think it was Doug, yeah.
Was it?
Was it Hudson, okay. I think what's gonna drive this, though, is more the density and how many units they can actually do versus the square footage, because if they can do eight hundred square foot units, but do more of them, I think they'd be fine with that.
That was my comment, right?
Yeah.
A line, which if sixteen, it's way too much, we talked about Broad Street, Jack actually built that project. And, and, you know, you can make that kind of creative, plot, the longer, the more units in that single row, the kind of less tasteful it is.
Yeah.
It's not two, it's not four, it's probably six or eight, right?
Yeah, so the regency, I went back to look at the plan because I wrote it last time, so it ranges from eight, anywhere from three units in a row up to five.
Okay.
We gave you some.
Okay. And I think Richfield is mostly.
It's four, but we're not on five.
I think we were talking six, like, originally we were talking six, and then I know we jumped to ten for some reason. I thought we were sort of at four, but maybe six.
No, well, so we're saying units, units per acre.
Just to give you some context. And it's way too big, but it's eighteen, that's a huge.
The, the ten number is units per acre.
Right.
Yeah.
We're talking about number of units per building. But I thought we had gone up to even potentially considering ten.
I don't think so.
I didn't plan if we do an apartment later on. Maybe that's what we were thinking, maybe that's what we think. I, I mean, I'd be willing to go up to six, again, it's giving them a little bit more. Where did we say?
What are we talking about, though? Okay, okay, so, or, okay, so, so first off, I thought we had removed the non-affordable option. We did, that's one of my comments in the sidebar. Okay, so, yeah, I didn't read that out. We can't read my comments.
We removed what?
The, the, the affordable option, I thought, or the non-affordable option. Take a number, twenty or twenty-five percent of the project shall be deemed affordable as defined by eighty percent of area median income.
I think we should just reference that to the equation area, it's really simple, then that way it's not outlined.
Joe, you open that door.
Sure.
Well, well, technically.
But I don't wanna, I don't wanna see a little off.
I, I want actual affordable units in the project.
Okay.
Are you upset by the comments from the?
Yeah, sure.
The strategic plan encourages you to go above the twenty-five percent, so I.
For affordable?
Chairman, yeah. I mean, if, if you read the master plan, you would rethink how you approach, you know, zoning generally, and I don't know whether you're talking about a proposal or an RFP or whatever.
We're talking about a bylaw, so, so.
In your bylaw, in the bylaws, I think you ended to conform.
So there's a couple of reasons why we got to here.
Yeah.
First of all is because, um, to add diversity in housing.
Yeah, which is a good thing.
So not every single house has two kids, because if you do the math out.
Right, right.
You know, one kid is about equal to the tax rate for schools, so much.
And contributors, right.
Um, so we want, well, so potentially new families, which, you know.
Younger couples.
Younger couples out of school.
Young adults and fifty-five to sixty-five.
Fifty-five, so we were saying over fifty-five, but then we, we're kind of saying, well, maybe we'll take away the fifty-five so we can get those people out of school to their first home.
Right.
So maybe even they get a newborn, but, you know, by the time the kids go into school, they're gonna wanna move to a bigger house anyway, probably.
Well, well, maybe, or not, or downsides, there are a lot of people, like, I'm thinking of downsides.
Well, that too, to get both sides, so we wanna add diversity in housing to help the tax base, but also, um, uh, yeah, so that's the main thing.
Why don't you make it general, and just say, uh, diversity in housing with a view to assisting, uh, tax rate considerations to be consulted and consult with the assessors committee.
So we still call it a cottage overlay, but she did take, Erica took out the fact that she called it, uh, senior, well, senior residential community, now she just calls it cottage overlay. So we take out the fifty-five, it's just a condensed.
Yeah, you can do it then.
It's to entice developers to not, you know, you saw the development at the, the building, it's to entice developers to build this versus that, to make it financially feasible for them to build this versus that.
Right, and that's the one consideration for the developers, and the other consideration is to make sure that the zoning you approve and the actions you take to approve variances to the zoning are consistent with the sustainability goals. And you obviously have to be able to sell this project, it sounds like you've consulted a couple of, um, developers already, and so you know, but the thing is, I wouldn't be constrained by that, just because we have to kind of override that and look at the tax base, which is a huge issue. And as you, you know, that's my issue, and, and you're gonna know it's too, it's mine too, and your parents' issue.
Well, so that's, that's why we're bringing this up.
Yeah, and you know that the tax base has increased since the strategic plan, which already said it was too high, by fifty percent. So, so we really are in a serious zone where you need to really think about this, how are you dealing with single family homes where, you know, the developers would like to disell to commuting, uh, childbearing people who are going to put burdens on the school system. So it's not just the planning board's responsibility, although I think your job is to really.
We're the frontline.
Globally.
Yeah, we are the frontline to it.
You're the, you're the frontline.
If, if we weren't bringing this up, it would never be talked about.
I, thank you, and I'm so glad I landed in the right spot to start, start with, but yeah, no, I think you, you'll do this, and there'll be people in town who'll keep, um, keep making noise about it, so.
Keep making noise about what? About the tax?
About the tax, about meeting all the goals towards diversity and sustainability and encouraging net contributors to come into the town.
Exactly, that's exactly, that's our exact.
That's the intent here, in the absence of this.
Yeah.
Developers can use our bylaws to create this eighteen lot subdivision, and these are great guys, and this project will look great, but this, this is the only thing we allow in town, this is it. Dunkin' Donuts, gas stations, nothing, we don't want anything, we just want that.
But bylaws.
But then we complain about the, the tax. We complain about all of it.
I know, I know, but I, but I think, so, forgive me, and I might as well just say this, this is kind of my personal goal.
Mine too.
I wanna do as much research as I possibly can to kind of come up with creative solutions to address them without getting too tied up in the politics. But, but, but to that point, and I'd be happy to look at that too, as makes up this year happy.
The chairman of the, uh, the.
Yeah, I think he's volunteered, you saw.
Well, the only other thing, and I also talk to Don Law a lot, so.
You're speaking our language, we're right on board with you.
Okay, great.
And it doesn't need to be all of this or all of that, the idea is really truly diversity.
I think that's, that's the main thing.
Well, and also Camp Virginia comes up, I was thinking, damn it, why couldn't we put in another development proposal concurrently with that? Not with a traditional development proposal, but to keep open space and also to do something that encourages diversity, I mean, I'd be interested in investing in something like that. And there might be people in town who, they have more time.
So that's my exact thought.
If we had more bylaws today.
And they should be rewritten.
So these guys who are here.
I may re, I may, not volunteer, I have to get a.
These Hudson Road guys said, this sounds great, but we can't wait for it, you know, we're in the process, so that's why we're trying to get this on the books now.
Yeah.
I was thinking the same exact thing for Camp Virginia.
Yeah.
This would be perfect, um, and with open space, you can work with a developer and make the pond open space, you know? If people are worried about having a pond to swim at, the open space could be the pond, you know, and you could work that into this, their, their, their definitive plan.
It's a lot of work, but it makes sense, and you only get one chance at that piece of property, is to do it right.
Yeah, I know, I was pretty, if you make it a farm, farm use.
It goes from, it goes from a one point three million dollar, I kind of did the rough math out for Camp Virginia, this is a total side note.
We should stay on this.
Hold on, I just wanna say this, I just wanna get this, I wanna get this on tape. There's about seventeen hundred houses, just, you know, roughly, if we're saying one point three million, I, I worked it out to be, it's about eight or nine hundred dollars per household for ten years, but if you do.
Per household, per year, ten years?
No, no.
For a household over ten years?
Over ten years, but that, you know, it's gonna be ten year loan, if you say like three, you know, Brad Cody said it'd be like three to four percent potentially, that ends up working to be about twelve hundred, so immediately we purchased that, we're saying every single house in Bolton, we're taking twelve hundred dollars out of your pocket.
Yeah, exactly.
That's not counting all their pavilions and all their fancy restroom, you know, restrooms are talking about maintenance of those or tearing them down, lifeguards.
We can put this on the agenda, but we shouldn't talk about this, it's not on.
Well, it's all part of the cottage overlay, it's all part of the same thing, it's the, it's the master plan.
You could say that's audience three.
That's just planned on the agenda?
Master plan consideration.
That's the reason why we do, so, that's the reason why we're doing a cottage overlay, in my mind.
Okay, so I, I'd be delighted to look at it when.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But by the way, I know you're really tired, do you want me to, do you still wanna talk after this?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, I'll hang up.
You really tired?
No.
Tired of us? She's tired of us, he'd be perfectly happy to talk to you.
Okay, getting back to. Three B and three B A are two different things, one talks about density per acre, one talks about effectively how, how many units are in each building.
Yeah.
I don't know how we, I don't know which one is more important, I don't know which one we focus on.
I think they're both important, I think they're both need to be talked about, I mean, I think we have a somewhat of a consensus.
Like six or eight.
Well, that's what I think, I think for.
On each building.
B A.
Yes.
It said, you know, no building shall contain more than two dwelling units, I think we have a consensus of maybe it should be six.
Okay.
So, and, and I'm okay with, with just going with that for now, in, in.
But should, should three B?
We say four, so, in.
No, I know, we were bouncing it back between two, four, six, I mean.
Yeah, I'm just.
But hold on, let me finish my thought, but three.
B.
B.
The base density is two dwelling units per acre, like that.
Should it be buildings, a number of buildings per acre, and then to further clarify, those buildings may contain X number of units.
So, so I thought we were saying, if we just.
It's two different concepts, how many buildings are, how many contiguous buildings are you gonna have on each one acre phosphid lot design type of thing? And then within that building, do you allow six or eight units?
Right.
And then when we go down to, and then I'm done, and then when we go down to, but if you do affordable, you may effectively double it. I think we scrap all that and say.
I really agree.
You would have.
So we should get rid of your affordable. We wanna get rid of, we wanna get rid of three altogether, don't we?
No, no. Who are you talking about?
No, three, three B, I think, which is just the non-affordable.
Right, I'm just saying, we should just have the affordable, not the non-affordable option, right?
The total.
Yes, yeah, yeah, so, so, yeah, so.
So get rid of three B.
A, I think both go away.
I'm confused now.
Okay. Get rid of four. Because down here in.
Four.
We're talking about four.
Multiply. If you, if you have a twenty-five percent affordable, then you get more.
No, I thought, we don't, we don't say that, we just say, but you have to keep three B and three B A, because this is what you need to state, and then you just need to say twenty-five percent of your.
However that gets worded, that's what I'm getting.
Yeah, so we have to keep this.
Right now, four kind of duplicates.
You want me to read this?
So four, we wanna.
Read about that.
Yeah, four, it's a, we're just gonna scratch, and we just say, need to say twenty-five.
We're all saying the same thing, however it's worded.
Okay.
So you've got that right. I, yeah, we're trapping that.
I liked Erica's find on lot coverage, right, so it's.
No maximum lot coverage, right?
Yeah, well, but, but it's something that is sort of a placeholder, depending on how we apply it, it's gonna be an overlay that only gets applied to certain parcels that really, and are all residential, that may not, because that only applies to industrial and business.
And this is your sticking point, if you wanna lose a business zoned parcel prospectively to see one of these get that.
No, I want it to be.
All residential of five acres and more, that's what it should be. Okay.
Five acres?
Yeah.
What do you think?
Oh, I just wondered if you had a good on five acre.
I thought we were looking at ten, but I thought ten had been floated before, but. Fine, so it's not a specific, I kind of like that, it's a specific overlay, these twelve parcels, these four parcels.
It's all at the right.
All residential.
I think that's what we're saying.
But it's not business, limited business, industrial.
Yeah, I don't wanna touch those, yeah.
So this is not an overlay then, this is a. It's still an overlay, but it's, um.
All residential.
Yeah, exactly. It's not really for residential.
Correct, yeah.
So, one thing I just wanted to ask the board, I do have a list of what's remaining for buildable lots in town, and I kind of just went through and highlighted what's ten acres or more, do you guys wanna see like a visual map of where these parcels are, and have a good idea of where you wanna apply them? That'd be good.
How many others?
There's twenty-seven, but you could take into consideration that anything that's a chapter can then come out of chapter and be part of this, so I'm not, I'm not including that.
Okay, okay.
Can I just ask, um, we, just to go back, when we say the base density, if we switch it to buildings.
Hold on, before you go there, because it's this question, but I'll let you. Is it ten or is it five?
I thought it was ten.
What do we think? Well, it's a question.
What I think we should do is go back to Brandon, because they kind of did this for the eighteen lot subdivision, and ask him how it worked out, because why make it, well, I just want it to make sense, I don't wanna put a number into it.
But he only did two units, he only doubled it, we, we were saying you can four X.
Yeah, but I think he doubled it based on some of the site require, requirements, I think he did some engineering behind it, so it'd be kind of.
Okay, totally, he's an awesome resource, especially because he looked at it for that problem, for this year's, totally. So that, that's kind of a, that's a place.
So on three B, when you say base density is two dwelling, is that, is that taking the overall acreage and dividing it by the buildings? Or is that saying specifically each acre can only have two dwellings, because I think it shouldn't be that, I think it should be, if you have fifteen acres, you can have.
Thirty, thirty buildings, is basic.
Whatever we determine it to be, yeah.
I thought this thing used phosphid as a place setter, and now you've got your little one acre lots, and now we're saying on each one acre lot.
Yeah.
You can have.
Two buildings.
Two buildings, oh, by the way, each building can contain six or eight units.
But I don't want it to be, it might, I'd rather give the developer more flexibility to put, group up a couple of fours.
I think the.
Townhouses, instead of having.
So phosphid is not your starting point, it's just.
Maybe.
This is.
But I think, I think the intent was this, was to say, okay, say that someone's just gonna do a mixture of two, four, six buildings, whatever, all attached, and they, you know, they've got however many acres, it was to say, if you have a site that has thirty, fifty acres, do you want that all completely developed with, you know, a really large number of units, so this was to say, let's put a cap on it, how do we put a cap on that without making it?
I think we, the cap should be, if we'd wanna have a cap.
Or do we just say a maximum?
It should be to the individual acre, it should be the total number of acres, how many buildings on that total number of acres, and then we can go through the plan, do you know what I mean?
Well, some.
Make it more flexible.
Title five gives you a limit.
Yeah.
And then when you cross that limit, you need to get into.
The water treatment, yeah.
Pushes you way, way far beyond, so there, there is an inherent limit already.
Right.
So do we even, yeah.
So do we, you know, so. Well, we've stepped it, we talked about this, but if you have a waste water treatment plan. If you have a waste water treatment plan, I mean.
But you gotta have a lot.
So there's financial limitations.
There is a financial limit, but there is the potential that somebody might wanna do it, if one of these big fires come up.
If you have fifty acres, it would make sense, yeah, so what limit, you, I, I think we floated a limit last, last time we talked about this.
That's what I thought.
Did we wanna have it as a certain maximum number of units or bedrooms or whatever?
I mean, couldn't we, uh, I mean, the planning board can deny a definitive plan, I mean, if we think it's too big.
But it has to be these, not. You can just deny it. Yeah, because if there not being a bylaw or, or regulation, it can't just be.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know what number it is, and that's, that's tough, that is a tough number to set.
And it's a number per acre.
But I, but I think that's gonna be a, a point that, you know, people are gonna bring up, and say, you know, how big can these things get? Um, I'm a little hesitant to say the density is gonna be two buildings per acre, three buildings per acre, I kind of wanna just allow the developer to do what they.
So how do we do that? I, I, I think saying a maximum number of units per building.
Which we said, maximum six units per building.
And, and then I, I think we, you know, we may wanna just put, have a cap on.
So the baseline, the baseline is a traditional.
The whole project.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
When we say two X, three X, four X, we're talking about based off a traditional layout, just like we did here, you could fit eighteen units, so eighteen is your.
Yeah, but that's, that was my old logic, the multiply it by two or four, I, I think now we're talking about.
No, but we take that number, we multiply it by four, that's how many units, that's how many buildings you can have, I'm confusing myself now.
I, I don't think we wanna necessarily do it that way, yeah.
I, I, I think, I think this, I think this kind of scraps the phosphid, prove a conventional now, give you a condensed.
So what are we talking about, two X, four X?
We're not talking about this thing.
We're not, that's, that's not in here.
Yeah.
So we're just saying, we're just saying how many buildings per acre.
Number of units per building, number of units in a building and number of units in the project.
Yeah, yeah, per acre, based on the number.
Not per acre, not per acre. Just as simple as that, how many units.
But you're saying maximum, a hundred units, no, no matter what.
And then how many units in the project.
No, but if it's a ten acre site, I mean, it's based off that ten acres.
Well, and, and then title five comes in with groundwater discharge amounts and, and all that sort, and nitrogen loading limits and all that sort of thing, that will, comes out to this magic.
Well, yeah, you've got thirty, isn't it like thirty percent required for open space, I mean, which you put in a lot of our.
Well, yeah, and then, I mean, you're gonna have, you're gonna have, um, zone one for your public water supply, and that takes up.
I think there needs to be some type of, there needs to be some type of dial that we can control the size of it, besides.
I particularly density, because do we want so many buildings on top of each other if we have.
Exactly.
I'd just be worried.
You, you want it to, you want it to fit in, you wanna have diversity of housing and you wanna add these houses, but you also don't want it to look ridiculous.
Right, you want it to fit the character of all, you don't want it.
You just have to be here, because if they're doing six unit buildings, maybe we only want one building, you know, per acre, but if you're doing two unit buildings, you want to be able to allow more buildings per acre, so how do you?
I don't know. No, I, I don't know.
Maybe we.
You have an opinion?
I'm thinking, creating another commission, a diversity commission, who has to approve it or something, I don't know, he can't, it has to be specific.
How, how many acres and how many buildings is your trio?
It's, it's three hundred and fifty units.
Okay.
I don't know the number of acres.
Okay.
But I can get.
So, so I mean, just as a, as a good local reference.
They're both four or five each, so divide that out, you know, whatever, say five to make it easy, so seventy.
So seventy, eighty, seventy buildings.
Yeah, that's just like seventy buildings or three hundred and fifty units.
The other thing we can do too is just require a buffer between the, each building, like no buildings to be closer to each other than twenty feet.
Twenty feet or something like that.
So the way Ridgefield does it is they have a big circle, and then neighborhoods, and actually, in your particular neighborhood, you don't even notice or see the other neighborhoods, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's just a buffer, or because there's, there's, there's trees dividing it?
Yeah, I mean, so, so there's the main loop, and then there's a lot, a lot of this, just the small sub loops, and there's, there's, since going up the hill, you've got some trees and other things kind of between those separate loops, so.
It kind of looks like.
You kind of isolate it from, from.
It kind of looks like this.
Yeah.
So this is the main road going around, then you have like these offshoots, the one hundred neighborhood, the three hundred, the five hundred, seven hundred, then there's a couple of little loops on the inside, you know, this is like.
Well, and, and, yeah, there's a bunch of other, other loops on, on the side there, we got.
Number of units in a building and then setbacks as between one building and another building.
So I think the units, the units in a building is just to get, it's an architectural thing.
It's a total architecture.
I don't think six is too many, I think it's maybe the numbers four or five. Six seems like a lot.
I think you can make six look aesthetically pleasing, and it's still, and, and by giving him six, I mean, what Doug had said, he's like, you know, two is tough, four is better, he's like, the more you.
Four was not enough.
No, and the more you can allow them to do them in a unit, the more cost effective it is, the more appealing it is, again, it's all going back to, is this appealing to the developer?
So that's the number, so six, so six units per building, and then we have to determine, so then is the next, is the next limiting, limiting factor just total units per acreage? Or is it a number of?
I think it's either total units per acre, or it's what Erica said, which I'm kind of liking, setback between each building, so it governs itself.
Well, I would say the, the setback, I would almost.
You may not want that though.
Anyways, no, I.
I'm just saying you may, you may want to not be right on top of each other, but you may not, just like we do phosphorid versus traditional, you may not want to spread it out, you may want to have groupings and then open space.
But I think the whole, but you've got to remember, these aren't individual houses, these are a block of buildings, so you don't want another block of a building right on top of it. I think that's kind of where we're limiting at six, you don't want to put two sixes right next to each other, you know, I mean, I think we need to require some sort of.
We can say that too, that the number of, each building should vary in the number of dwelling units, like within a certain, I don't know, something like that.
To me, it seems like, so we set the number of max units per building, and then I think the, we skip right over how many buildings per, I think we say how many dwelling units per development, per, based on the number of acres, so if it's ten acres, we want so many, there's a max number.
I think that's a little bit, yeah, I think you're.
So if it's ten acres, if it's ten acres, say it's forty units, you know, if you do four times, if you do four units, four units times acres, so maybe we do six units per acre.
Yeah.
So if you say ten acres, you can have sixty units, and with a max of six per building, and you figure out how many buildings you want.
So, so, so imagine the, the sixty unit, so ten acres, six, six per acre, gives you sixty units, which times a hundred and fifty senior, two-bedroom number, works out to ninety-nine hundred, just under the ten thousand gallon discharge, yeah.
So what was that now?
So, so there's a, in Title V, there's a, if a development is going to have more than ten thousand gallons, it starts on the treatment, regardless of the size. So whether it's one acre or a thousand acres.
So if you have a ten acre.
So, so, so.
So it works out.
Ten acres, six units per acre, sixty units, if it's senior housing.
Yeah.
Then it's hundred, senior housing, two-bedroom units are a hundred and fifty gallons, which times sixty comes out to nine thousand, which is, right, I, I think you can go up to sixty-six senior units. If you do, you know, if you, you know, no age restriction, you know, and then the developer could say, I want age restricted. Otherwise, it's a hundred and ten gallons per bedroom per day, which puts you at, what is it, it's basically ninety, ninety total bedrooms. So, which gives you a mix of, you know, one, twos, and threes.
So we, if we were to say a maximum of six units per acre.
Yeah, not in a particular acre, but the overall acreage divided by six.
Yeah, just, just six, yeah, six units per acre, then we're not limiting the number of buildings, they can mix and match wherever they want, yeah, that might be work.
Then the final piece is just, do we want a max number of units in a development?
I don't think I would.
No, I think, I think if you're.
Density per acre. But if you have, so if you have a fifty acre, then you're talking about three hundred.
Sure.
Which, which is probably, which is probably Ridgefield.
Probably, yeah.
So it's six units per acre and then?
But you're also then talking of the treatment plant.
Yeah.
So we get, yeah.
Which that would be a limiting factor anyway, it probably wouldn't happen because of that.
Is it six?
If you could do fifty acres with that many units, it might, it might work.
Might be financially work.
Yeah, doing, doing twelve acres with sixteen.
So it's not, it's not buildings, it is, it would be six dwelling units per acre.
So if they do a building that has six units in it, they can only do one of those buildings for an entire acre?
Correct, yeah. Well, not for that given acre. I think it's, it's an overriding average, just look at the total.
The base density is six dwelling units per acre, for total, we can say for total acreage.
Yeah.
If that makes it clear.
Six per building, six per acre.
You'll see, no, six units per acre.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so we are going back to.
And then a max of six units in a building.
I'm going to take off.
That's fine. It's pretty simple.
So he's going to.
This is like a twentieth iteration.
Well, I think, and I think we should still come back to the setbacks, you know, potentially.
Yes, yes, so I'm looking back at my notes on, when we had all the developers, Hudson is two-bedroom max, twenty-four hundred square feet.
Okay.
So.
That's what I was wondering.
Yeah, so that's where twenty-four hundred came from, but they also have a two-bedroom max, those are along three.
Why do you think we need threes?
But again, it's ten percent.
Yeah, they weren't really sold on threes, were they?
No, but he had said, Doug had said, and I thought it was someone else.
Said it would be nice.
He said to add.
He's not a bullshit artist, he's really not.
No, I mean, he said just to be able to add one or two in there, that gives a little bit of diversity for them to be able to, you know, play with, I think is what he was, and again, ten, you're only allowing ten percent of them to be three. I would actually like this to be higher.
So I guess if somebody's in a two-bedroom and they, they do want to have a family, they have the potential to, I guess, move down the street and, and to a different neighborhood or something.
Or just, I mean, if someone, if a couple that just got married wants to move into a three-bedroom, they want to have an office, they want to have, you know, I mean, whatever, you know, it could be a guest room and their room. Doesn't mean they're having a kid, it's just, if they wanted more space, it gives that a little bit of an option for that extra.
As long as you don't think.
An elderly couple that has living help or something like that, you know.
Except two bedrooms for sets of grandkids.
Or there's some help.
Yeah.
Oh, is this the definitive for the one? Oh, yeah, I wanted to tell you, I just gave that to you because it's formative, and I figured I wanted to review it.
Yeah.
That's the next meeting.
So is there any other links in here?
Um, I did, I, we, I, you've mentioned visitor parking with each unit, I didn't notice it in here.
I don't think we made a decision on that.
I don't think we did, I didn't.
Yeah, I'll read that out.
No, but I think we do want, you know, I don't know whether it's.
Okay, the way Ridgefield, the way Ridgefield does it.
Each unit has one or two parking spots in front of you.
Yeah, and then there's like, for a number, for each, say, two or three units, there's some, free, for each, there's like a guest, say one, you have to make some calculation, like so many guest spots, so save one guest spot for every four units or every two units, say every two units, and you want to divide that out somehow, you know, so if there's sixty units, and you want thirty guest spots, or, that sounds like a lot.
I mean, we have like thirty units in ours, and I think we have like five or six.
Right, so maybe the math.
Well, I just, I, I'm mainly there at cottage, and here's sixty units, and we have probably twenty guest spots.
That's a lot.
We have, well, it's two per cottage and like twenty guest spots, and we have parking issues.
So the way Ridgefield does it is, is like, there's like two buildings and then like two or three guest spots, two buildings, two or three guest spots. So maybe it's one guest spot per building or something.
Yeah, I like that, I like limiting.
Yeah.
I move, we adjourn. Move the table, listen to Jerry for that.
Second, I want to stay longer.
The others, the others say aye.
Aye. I'm already like down the door, like I got a go.
You guys were a car.